It is called to order. Present we have Ms. Pitko, Ms. Leeper, Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. Gerber, and myself, Mrs. Vitale, Dr. Jones, Mr. Asa, Ms. Jacobson, Mrs. Maxicanelli, Mr. Peterson. I ask you to all rise, and Ms. Jacobson, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, it's been an eventful week. Everybody knows that last Friday, Dr. Jones notified the board at the end of the day that opportunity knocked, and she answered, she will be accepting a position as the new superintendent of schools at Greenwich starting July 1st. We wish you well on your endeavor, but for the next five months or so, you are still ours, and we have a lot to do, and looking forward to working together to just keep on moving forward. So many new initiatives that are in the budget book. We do, this does affect the budget, and that we will be conducting a superintendent's search and hopefully hiring a new superintendent beginning of next school year or shortly thereafter. I asked Dr. Jones to just ask staff to get some costs together, just what the expense was the last time we did a superintendent's search. You will, it's at your seat, so we will be making some adjustments to this budget in order to, you know, have money to conduct the search. I asked for some just suggestions from staff of where this money might come from, and just to keep it in one place and to not necessarily affect programming, the recommendation was to take $80,000 from the HVAC consultant fee, which was $100,000, leave $20,000 in there, $10,000 for, to look at the high schools to start, being that neither one of the high schools has, you know, a large renovation in their future, and some of the elementary schools do. Not happy about this. It was just a recommendation. The board can go in a different direction if it so chooses, but that is a starting point. Also, over the past week, we went before the Board of Selectmen for our capital nonrecurring projects. All of them were approved except for the partial roof replacement at Stratfield. That was not moved forward. The amount that we requested was too low. It was $85,000. We need to have a request of $100,000. It was in the waterfall, when we had the Capitol waterfall planning workshop in the beginning of this school year, it wasn't in there at that amount, but it, you know, something happened along the way. So that did not move forward, so the recommendation was to look at that in this, putting it in this operating budget. Mr. Cullen can speak to that a little bit more when we get to the operations and maintenance of buildings. So that is where we are with that. We can talk more about these things as we move forward. Just to give you a little where we are in terms of the superintendent's search, I did reach out to CAPS today and just got a list of names of possible interim superintendents. I don't know if we're going to need it, but, you know, we'll at least start the ball rolling with that. The board will be meeting this week and talking, you know, next steps, just to get the ball rolling on this, and we'll continue to update everybody at our regular meetings, and, you know, as last time really just involve the community. On Friday, an email went out. Mrs. Brown was kind enough to send out emails to town officials on my behalf, as well as to the board. I reached out to the PTA council president on Friday, spoke to the first selectmen, emailed PTA presidents yesterday, reached out to them. Dr. Jones reached out to all parents today and staff on Friday. So I think that everybody is up to speed, and let's just move forward. So, moving right along, the update from our last, the January 15th meeting, a question came up about the math academy, and we asked Dr. Jones just to put this, we talked about it a little bit in the finance committee meeting last week, and asked just to have an update of where we are with that. Dr. Jones, do you want to give us a little update?
Yes, I'm going to invite Mr. Cummings and also Walter Ford to talk about some of the pre-planning and thought that has been going into this, and I think that they, Mr. Wakeman has done a tremendous amount of work just trying to think about whether or not this would be a concept to move forward. Mr. Wakeman, it's all yours.
Thank you. I trust you've received a one-page memo, is that correct? I'm just wondering how much information, where I should begin?
We did get it, but you can just, you can go through though. Talk us through it.
I will talk you right through it, but just so the board is aware, I did have a one-page memo here. Essentially, it's the opportunity to create a section in fourth grade. What's proposed is an accelerated curriculum. In fourth grade, it would be a single class, self-contained, held at one school, yet to be determined, and that class would continue in the following year into fifth grade, so that there would be a fourth and a fifth grade the following year. The course sequence, or the idea behind the course sequence, is that students would have a combination of fourth, fifth, and sixth grade content within those two years, and then in sixth grade, they would enter into, the sequence of courses, starting with grade seven, pre-algebra. Just so that you're aware, that is a structure we currently have in place across the district for students, but this would be a class designed for students to take that path, and I can go into some of the differences between both paths, but there are opportunities, again, for students across the district in that. In speaking with area districts, there are some other school districts who have accelerated programs or enrichment-type programs. They vary a little bit depending on the district, but their criteria for entrance generally have some common themes to them. They are some standardized measures, as well as some in-house measures, and it's the combination of those two that look at students' problem solving and as well as classroom performance, and that's the criteria that enables students to enter into that sequence of courses. From a logistics standpoint, we're looking at a class size, a minimum of 13, which is what is standardized across the district, to a maximum of 25, and there will be some efforts to make for gender equity, but that, again, depends on the pool of students. For example, I can't control the pool that enters, but, again, we'll be looking for some kind of balance in the classroom. And in terms of transportation, the families would, because this is an opt-in program for those students who qualify, families would be expected to transport their children for that fourth grade year, and then continue on into the fifth grade year. And in middle school, the students would exit fifth grade, but they would go back to their home schools, their home-zoned schools, right? And the reason for that is because once they enter into the middle school, the sequence of course options are available to all students, and so they could just continue on with that course sequence within their middle school. So that's it in a nutshell, but I am open for questions. Again, as Dr. Jones had mentioned, I have done quite a bit of talking and thinking through in terms of what the program might entail and the types of students that we would be looking to enter into the program.
Ms. Maxicanelli?
I am extremely intrigued by the, I mean, when that came out of our whole discussion with the racial imbalance plan and thoughts of magnet programs, et cetera, and this idea came about, I really liked the idea. However, I would want to hear a lot more about how this is going to be different. I don't see how this would have any legs to it if we're bending over backwards to assure our parents that they're going to get the exact same thing where you are if you stay in your neighborhood school, but this is another option. I don't see how that sells this program. If the idea is really to target exceptional math students, or students with that potential, I'd like to hear more about how this is going to be different, how it will serve students differently.
So I'm glad you brought that up. One of the ways that it's going to be different is right now, students in fifth grade who qualify for our double acceleration, that's a process they go through. There's an end-of-fifth-grade assessment that all students take. They must qualify in that first. Then there is a pool of those students who qualify to take the Iowa test, which is an aptitude test, and for those students, they have the ability to go in, but they must take a summer grade six content course. So that, part of the issue is, because of the way the curriculum is designed, it doesn't spiral or cycle back. In grade six, there's certain content that is only taught in grade six, and so you need to go through that in order to have foundational skills as you move through the course sequence. In this course option, first of all, that would start this process earlier in the elementary grades, and it would put the students through those sequence of courses. So the end of the fifth grade, the expectation would automatically be to go into the grade seven, pre-algebra, for those students. It wouldn't be based on a summer program. It would be based on taking the Iowa test course. Because they would have received that content already, those requirements would have already been met.
Okay, but as it is now, students do not have to do any summer work and can qualify for that transition to pre-algebra?
So let me clarify, if I may?
Yeah.
All right. We have essentially three options when students enter into grade six. So from fifth grade, majority of students will pass, well, it depends. Actually, many students will go into math six, which is a continuation of math five, if we were to call it that. So math five, they continue in grade six math, the grade seven math, and then grade eight pre-algebra. We have what's called transition to pre-algebra, and that's part of the reason for our end-of-year assessment, and that is a, an accelerated program starting in grade six, that is approximately two-thirds of the year, grade six curriculum. It's a much quicker pace, and they begin grade seven curriculum at the end of their grade six year, so they go through part of grade seven. In grade seven, they pick up with a grade seven curriculum, and grade eight, so that they are taking grade eight algebra as eighth graders. So those are the, those are the two core areas of courses that are, that are offered across the district. There is a much smaller group of students, and we're talking about between 40 and 50 students, 5% of the population essentially, who also qualify for that double acceleration. That means that they'll be taking grade seven pre-algebra as sixth graders. And often, in the past, it has been with seventh grade students, so it does have an impact on their schedules and so forth. Recently, we've had enough students where there has been a self-contained sixth grade class, but again, that all depends on the students who qualify for that course and the middle school to which they attend.
And so all of the sixth graders who are taking pre-algebra seven were required to take a summer school course?
Correct, and they needed to pass that course in order to go into the grade seven pre-algebra. In other words, they had to demonstrate that they had mastered the grade six content prior to entering the grade seven pre-algebra.
Okay, so this would then, that negates that. You would need no summer school program in order to-
That's correct.
-transition into that.
They would follow this sequence and be prepared by that, by that point to enter into that grade seven pre-algebra course.
Okay. And then regarding, and I know this is way putting the cart before the horse here, but just throwing it out there, the idea that families will transport their own children, which obviously could be a real hardship for certain, perhaps qualified children, is there, was there any discussion of a very preliminary nature of if there's a bus route for the children of wherever this program is going to be housed, where a student in a different district could simply be the first pickup, and then it continues on the route for that home, for that neighborhood school, as a possibility?
We looked at, we investigated a little bit into the buses. It's difficult to say because we don't know who the kids are-
Right.
...right, and the neighborhoods and so forth, but what we did presume is that children would be attending from all schools, from 11th, there'd be 11 schools, obviously, 10, one would be the homeschool. And it was, the calculation was approximately $50,000 for two mini-buses to run runs, to transport those children. That currently is not in the budget, which is, again, why this was proposed as a family drive.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Pitko?
So with 11 elementary schools, roughly how many students per school would go to this program?
Well, we're looking at a maximum of 25, capping the class at 25, so-
Four sections of 25, or 25 in total?
Twenty-five, one section.
So we currently have gifted program for students that are in fifth grade?
That's correct.
And are these students' needs being met, their learning needs being met right now?
So I want to make a distinction, if I may, between our gifted program and what this proposal is.
Yes.
Our gifted program is not a math or a content-specific gifted program. It is more holistic, and therefore, the work that these students engage in, with the gifted services that are provided, is more project-based. It is not specific to their math needs. And the other side of that coin is, you may have a child who has some exceptional abilities with mathematics, who may not be involved in the gifted program.
Yeah, I'm trying to understand the difference between the K-8 STEAM initiative of all the students versus the gifted program versus now this program, so that one student from one elementary school that we're meeting their needs, that's what I'm trying to understand, versus this program and having them go to a different school?
So the STEAM program is based on the practices, if you will, and when I say the practices, think in terms of the high, the academic expectations, the profile of a graduate. This is sort of foundational work at the elementary level-
Mm-hmm.
...that will be leading children towards those ends. In other words, building their, their critical thinking and problem-solving, communicating, all those 21st century skills. So that is essentially what the STEAM program focuses on. The gifted program really is pull-out time, a couple hours, what's equivalent to a couple hours a week, with like-minded peers, to be able to share their ideas and, and work on projects and so forth that are related. We do have specific units that we implement, or we cycle through every, every year, nine units over three years, and that's the, so they have opportunities to explore their questions and go more in-depth in passion areas, if you will, and areas of interest, but the mathematics, this particular proposal, even though it's a self-contained classroom, the mathematics portion of it will focus more specifically on addressing the needs of students' competencies with mathematics and take them as far as they can go with respect to the compacting of the curriculum.
Okay.
So, I hope that answers your question.
Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, hi, thanks. So I guess my question is, I know you had mentioned you had looked at other districts. Are there any other districts that have a program like this?
There are some districts that do what is called compacting, and that is taking more than one year's worth of mathematics within a span of one year. There are other districts that have, I'm not sure how to describe it, they're more along the lines of, they will go more quickly through their content curriculum, but there's more enrichment involved. It's not necessarily moving through more curriculum in the next grade level.
But like one classroom, one classroom of anywhere from 13 to 25 students?
There, they-
Like this, like-
It's not designed the same way as this. In other words, it's not all children would get bused to one area-
Right.
...or transported to one area. It's, it's a program that is involved typically in most, across schools. Again, it's different in all the schools, so it's not identical to this. This is sort of an amalgam of a number of the programs that I've seen out there. There are some that have specific, a program like this, but they, it requires increased staffing and, you know, additional FTE in order to meet it, but it's in all their schools.
Okay.
So it, it depends, again, on the area district that, that we're talking about, but many districts are trying, are looking at addressing the needs of challenging students and making-
Right. No, and I totally understand that, and I think the idea behind it is really exciting, but I'm just having trouble envisioning, like what, what does the day of a student in this class look like? Like they're, let's say you have the program at North Stratfield, and someone is at Sherman, so they got to get all the way up to North Stratfield, they walk in the door at North Stratfield, and what does their day look like?
So the day really would be like their typical peers, with the exception of the content in mathematics.
But just the one class is going to be different?
That one class, however, I will say that there will be opportunities, given that it is self-contained, for that teacher to integrate, for example, the mathematics within the science, or with the mathematics within the social studies. So there are other opportunities to integrate that, the mathematics that they are learning within other content areas.
And how would that work with the curriculum that we already have in place for all of those subjects, like that?
Good evening, Mike Cummings, Chief Academic Officer. We're currently involved with work with a couple of groups of our elementary teachers on that very concept, and looking to essentially bring the curriculum together around common nexus points, as it were. Given the provisions of this particular program, we would be working with the classroom teacher to provide professional learning, looking at the curriculum specifically to enrich the mathematics pieces that we wanted to add. For example, in our current fourth grade curriculum, adding elements of both the fifth, the fifth grade math into that would be new, so we'd have to explore that further. Same when we get to fifth grade, we'd have to bring the sixth grade curriculum in, but we're confident that we can see that in science and social studies particularly.
Okay, and then another question I have, and forgive me, it's been a while since I've had an elementary school student, but I know that at Osborne Hill, where my children went, they, the children in fifth grade changed classes. Will these children not be changing classes, or will they be changing classes? But I, again, I'm just, I'm having trouble envisioning exactly what a day of a student in this program is looking like.
Right. Currently, the way it is, both ideas were, were discussed. The idea of, do we, do we departmentalize, for example, in fifth grade, and then, as we do in many schools, and also departmentalize then in fourth grade? Does this have an impact on that? Or should they be self-contained classes? At the moment, the current plan is to have a self-contained class in fourth grade that would continue on into fifth grade, and the rationale and reasoning behind that is because these kids will have common experiences in the mathematics area, and the overall impact on their schedules and the integration, it would affect the overall impact on their schedules and integration of content areas. It doesn't mean as we go down the road that that may, that is, there isn't an opportunity to have a self-contained math class and then rotate through, but again, the, what's taking priority here is the instruction of the mathematical content.
Right, and just one more question. With that in mind, I mean, let's say that you end up having 25 students in the class. I would imagine, even though you're talking about 25 students who are all very strong in math, there would be probably levels, maybe some would be stronger in some areas of math or the others, so there would have to, I assume, be a certain amount of differentiation within that class, even though you're talking about a group of high-level students in math, so that's just something that you're, I'm sure you've-
There always is.
Right, okay.
There always is, yep.
Thanks.
Mr. Asa?
Couple questions, through the chair to Dr. Jones. Just to be clear, this conversation spurred from our discussion on racial imbalance, but at this point, that's not coming into play. Now we're simply talking about a potential new initiative, correct?
That's correct. We did initially, though, look at if we put, and we've done all the homework to look at if this program was at McKinley, it does bring it down three percentage points, so, but the, we haven't based this on the school site. We've really based it on what is the program we would be looking for for children.
Okay, and then just to follow up or piggyback on Mrs. Gerber, I'm kind of also having trouble envisioning, because when I thought what we were talking about was a cohort, a group of students in a class, and as they go through their day, mathematics would be incorporated in a different way than it is now into all different subject matters. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, so, does that mean that they're all staying together? So they, they're all, they're together for the whole day, basically? Because I thought, I thought you just said that they may be going to different places, but the only way I can understand this is if they were, as a group, together all day, every day.
Right, as I had mentioned, that we had discussed the idea of departmentalizing, which means they would only come together for their math time, and then go to some other teacher, for example, for science or social studies or what have you, but landed on what made the most sense at this point is that they are self-contained, and that the mathematics is integrated within all the other content areas. There are other opportunities to reinforce the mathematics that's learned during math instruction in other content areas throughout the course of their day.
Okay, so that makes sense.
Okay. Thank you.
And I might just add, in fourth grade, we're really not departmentalized across all 11 schools.
That's correct.
Very, very little.
Ms. Jacobson?
Thank you. I had a similar, just a couple of questions. One, also similar to Mr. Asa, was on the location. I know you're not there yet in terms of where this would be, but just to clarify from this get-go, we're not looking to displace any students from any current site in order to accommodate this program, correct?
That is not, that's correct.
Thank you. Thank you. I assume that you've gone through the numbers right now, just as a general baseline of those that qual, would qualify, just to get an idea of numbers today, if this were in place today.
That's correct. I have been looking at a little bit about, and in part to think about where the criteria, and thinking about the measures that other districts are using, and what would be the criteria for us, who are we servicing? Who are the kids that, that we need to be able to identify? So I have gone through and taken a look at some of the numbers. Again, this would be based on information that we yet to, we, we don't have. In other words, grade-three SBA scores, we don't know what those are, so it'd be based on some of that information, but I have looked at past data, and I've also looked at our current accelerated group of kids, just trying to get a sense of what is a profile of these kids.
And what is that number, generally speaking?
In terms of the total number of students who might qualify for this, upwards to anywhere between 40 and 60, depending on the grade level.
Okay, so-
Depending on the year that we're looking at.
So let's just say you're starting out with one classroom of 13 to 25, but you have 40 who meet the standard, then what?
We will be starting with the 25 students.
So, right. My question is, how are you going to determine which 25 of the 60 get to go?
It will be based on the criteria.
So like the highest scoring, or something like that?
That's correct.
And would you be adjusting by, would you have any weights associated with that, similar to, say, gender, or what school they're coming from, things like that nature? Or will it simply be the highest of the highest are the ones that get picked?
It really is looking at meeting the needs of the students, so it's based on the overall performance. We, I am cognizant of having equity across the district in terms of all access for all kids and opportunity for all kids, as well as gender, so, you know, and right now, depending on the group, just looking at the number in terms of gender, there's anywhere from 40, 60 split to almost an even split, so I'm not anticipating that that's going to be as much of an issue. In terms of equity across the district, it does differ among the schools, and working with the, the numbers of students, for example, just on a parallel track, and part of what entered my thinking is looking at the kids who are identified as gifted, we do have numbers that fluctuate in different schools, at different, on different years, so I anticipate that that would be a number that would fluctuate across the district as well.
Okay, that was it for right now. Thanks.
Mr. Dwyer, and I just want, we could probably talk about this for another half an hour. I wanted to spring it back that, in the context of this discussion, it's to the money that we have in the budget, and whether or not, you know, how we feel about that number, Mr. Dwyer. Not to cut off with the question you're going to ask, but just to kind of, you know, get our focus in, in terms of, you know, the, what information we need to determine if we want to keep the money in the budget to fund this.
So I support this initiative, and I am glad that Mr. Asa raised the concept that while the idea may have started with racial imbalance, I think at Ms. Leeper's suggestion, it morphed into, I'll say, we ought to look at this specialized math program simply because we do want to increase the opportunities in math education, STEM education. This, I think, is part of that. I don't think we should leak, think of this as, this is for the gifted and talented kids. A couple of years ago, we had a conversation at this table where some members of this board wanted to differentiate, we have special education children, and we have gifted children, and it's like the two never match. There are special education children who are excellent at math, and this could be an opportunity for them to excel, and so I see this as fulfilling that goal as well. We're always looking at new ways to educate and make our program a more comprehensive program. That's the mark of any quality school district, and I think this would just fit into that. I am not so concerned that not all of the answers are known. We frequently ask staff to say, we like this idea, here's some money set aside to further explore it and finalize the details, because we leave those instructional methodologies up to the staff, and so I don't mind if, if our two presenters here don't have all the answers right now, because I think that's the purpose of that budget. We spend $7,000 in looking at improved curriculum, and then some, every year. I think this just falls into that same, same bucket, and we actually have a policy about instructional grouping, and I would read a sentence from it. As a result, students may choose- "As a result, students may choose or be assigned to instructional groups that emphasize challenging learning activities appropriate to the current instructional levels of the students within the group." So I think this fits within that policy as well, that says, let's, let's find a program that meets the needs of those students, because the whole high school graduation change and the whole direction of public education is trying to go to more individualized, tailored instruction to meet the needs of specific students. So I think this all fits in. I'm done.
Thank you. Mr. Peterson?
She already had, she's had the floor already on this. So I was, I was waiting for my questions until we got to the money aspect. So through the chair to, to Dr. Jones. I noticed, kind of going back through the materials from the original presentation back in September, that your, your general idea at that point was that there would be $5,000 in teacher professional development costs and $15,000 in other teacher planning costs. I wondered, how did you pare that down to $7,000? And, and is that going to be enough for something that you originally thought was going to be a much more expensive proposition to get up and running?
Yeah, I think the actual budget number is 9,000. Am I, am I correct with that, Walter?
Right.
Yeah, it's where it landed. And I think at the last meeting, we said 7,000, and we should have said 9. And it's, it's on one of the line items. Thank you. Okay, it's actually on question, on the question packet.
Right.
Yeah, question number one. No, I think we, I think we do feel like that that is adequate. And again, that's from having months of going in and digging in and talking about it and looking at all of the different components. You know, originally, it was, were you going to have a fourth grade and a fifth grade? Was it just going to be fourth grade? So I do, I do think we think it's adequate. The biggest discussion was probably, more than anything, is the transportation, which we didn't feel like we were ready to put a number like that in the budget. Yeah.
And I guess, a, a general question, other board members have answered a lot of my questions, but kind of a conceptual issue that I'm having with this is that you're not imagining that this group is going to be more accelerated at the end of their time through eighth grade than, than someone who is already accelerated and takes geometry in eighth grade at their, at their home school. You're not, you're not expecting this program to generate people who are going to skip ahead to an algebra II or pre-calculus.
You're speaking to triple acceleration.
Well, I mean, if, if we're going to take the, the most gifted math students in the district...
Correct.
And, and supercharge them early on, shouldn't we have that almost as a goal?
Well, there are opportunities for children to do that. As a matter of fact, we currently have a student who is, I believe, in eighth grade taking algebra II. So it is not about precluding kids from accelerating. They're, they're, if, if, students are demonstrating that they have the abilities to do this and have the capacity at particular grade levels, in other words, we're not pushing them so far ahead that they're losing foundational information before they move forward, there are those opportunities all along the way. And that has been a premise in, in the math program. Even in our transition to pre-algebra, there's still opportunities for, for children to, to go into the accelerated program.
No, I get that. I guess all I'm, all I'm saying is that, you know, as Ms. Mass canelli said earlier, you know, if we're just having, if the, if the only advantage is having them all together and maybe, you know, building a love of math, like that's a, a goal in itself. But, you know, if, if we can offer a program that, there is a sense that it will speed acceleration. I mean, I would think that that would be, obviously, you know, not an every kid scenario, but almost a goal of having this kind of tightly grouped cohort.
Right. There is, there is a lot of work to do, and we will know more as kids enter into this program, and we certainly would be able to adjust as we move forward. But currently, as it, as it is planned, this is exceptionally rigorous to prepare students for grade seven pre-algebra as sixth graders. As we had mentioned, we have a cohort that is, or we have had increases across the district, which we're very proud of, and it's continually gone up every year. But we, this is an opportunity to continue to grow that and give others, children, the opportunity. So if the students are demonstrating that we can take this beyond, we certainly can, can look into that.
Ms. Pitco?
So in my previous district, I actually modeled our gifted program based off of Fairfield. And in doing so, I learned that after gifted children may have an IEP. So my question actually, may actually be for Mr. Mancusi. Given the nature of the program that you've described, saying secluded or segregating these 25 students, are we in any way breaking any federal, state, or IDA laws by secluding them? Because the whole point is to inclusion.
Students with disabilities are not excluded from this program. Like Mr. Dwyer said, if a student with disabilities has a specific strength in the area of math, they may be included in this program.
Ms. Leeper?
I'll try to keep my comments brief. I just want to thank you. I know this is a tremendous amount of work, and, thank you. I always think it's exciting to pursue some specialized programs for our specialized learners and that this is a group of kids that can easily get overlooked. And I just will also add that we don't necessarily have to provide opportunities for kids to find a lot of joy in learning, something they love, for an end goal of being triple-accelerated or whatever, because learning isn't only linear, it's also expansive. And this is a real opportunity for kids who love math and might be bored to find ways to pursue that interest in a more expansive setting than just linearly through the curriculum, if that makes sense. And I'm wondering what you think, if you have any ideas, about family interest? Do you think families will be interested in this type of program? Because I feel bad at the thought of you having done so much work and families just being so satisfied with their zone school that they're not willing to, to try this. And I'd love your thoughts.
First of all, in terms of the work, this is about the kids. So in terms of the family's interest, at this point, I don't know. But at a point between now and the end of the school year, when we have refined those criteria, we can reach out and survey those families. Again, the pool size that we had talked about between 40 and 60 would be a way to start. Again, for children who meet that criteria, I don't anticipate that the top-ranked, one through 25, would be interested in taking, in interest in this. However, we do, I do want to make that available. And then we can also look at the total pool and look at the families who would be interested in this type of program.
Thanks. Ms. Asa?
Okay. Two quick math questions, our budget questions. Just to clarify, to Dr. Jones, on page two, question one, Ms. Leeper asked, and you give a break out of the math professional development. So it's listed $9,000 for this, what we're discussing now. Am I correct in, in saying that the, the following five lines there would be happening regardless of whether this 9,000 went through or not?
That's correct. This is math professional development in totality. So when you look at, for instance, where it says 1,800 for advanced placement, that's high school.
Okay. Okay, thank you for clarifying that. And finally, can we just touch on what the, if any, additional ongoing cost? Or is there no additional cost because these kids are already in school and they would be in a section?
So this year, the costs are primarily getting the program up and running. That is work that needs to be done in terms of professional development for the teacher that would be teaching this course, as well as the curricular work that needs to be done in, in combining and looking at, aligning the standards so that we are compacting. So there is work in that area that needs to be done, as well as any resources to support it. We are resource-rich. I anticipate that we can utilize many of the resources that we currently have in the district. There are some other resources that have done some preliminary work on looking into, but again, we're talking about one class of students and one teacher. So it is not like purchasing for an entire district.
Or adding staff. We'd be utilizing existing staff.
Right. Our current, our current staffing, and perhaps Dr. Jones could speak to this more clearly than I, but we did not include additional FTE in this, because it is essentially shifting students around the district with our current projections and thinking about where students might end up. So it's a matter of, of moving staff and students.
Okay. So in essence, this is an initial investment of $9,000, and moving forward in future years, we shouldn't anticipate spikes or increases because of this program?
With, and Mr. Cummings here has been helping me scribbling on a note here. We will, we need to continue this into grade five, and so there will be some funding for next year to continue the program, because it would be brand-new again in fifth grade. We would have something to build off of. We would be able to, more directly, instead of imagining what it might be like, we'd be able to respond to what the fourth grade needs are, and then also build on that for fifth grade.
Would you anticipate it would be a number under $10,000 like this?
I'm anticipating it would be about the same amount.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Jacobson, last question. I'm sorry.
I had mine up for a long time.
You also had, like, a lot of questions at the beginning, too. We have a whole, we've been on this topic for a half hour, and we have the rest of the budget. And this is not, we can re, come back, we can ask these gentlemen to come back and report more and ask more questions about this in the future. Ms. Jacobson, last question.
To Dr. Jones, does this program then qualify wherever the host site is for a magnet program to be qualified under unique school?
As in, having one classroom? No.
It wouldn't.
No. We, we actually looked at the unique school concept for, gosh, all of last year, I would say. And actually, when we were having our phone calls with the state, trying to see if there was a way to have a program that would qualify as unique school. But even a program within a school does not qualify.
So the entire school has to be filled with unique programming across the board?
And even that, and even that, we were unable to look at a unique program status for, for instance, a world language program at McKinley. They said no. And ultimately, I guess, it really comes down to the State Board of Education supporting and voting on what a unique school is.
Understood. Thank you.
If I may, I'd like to just thank the committee members who are in the audience, who participated in helping to put this together.
Thank you, gentlemen, for presenting to us. If any board members have any other questions that they'd like to follow up, please email through Dr. Jones. Okay. All right. Staff salaries, I'm sorry, take that back. Revenue, review section revenue, pages 11 through 20.
Yeah.
At Dr. Jones's suggestion, I'm going to ask you all to turn to page 16. That might be a good place to start. Just sing. Mr. Asa?
Yes. So regarding, I just make sure, building rentals. We, we talked, and this was, touched on in the question and answers, page 11, number Our facilities were taken out of circulation for projects. We've not seen a return to the full rental at this time. Is there anything we could be doing proactively to try and increase building rentals from organizations that have used us in the past, or possibly trying to tap into new organizations?
You know, Mr. Cullen could answer that, but I would say often, increased use has increased cost. It actually doesn't necessarily, the rental money often is eaten up because we have to have staff opening those buildings, cleaning up from those buildings. Sometimes it's more of a challenge actually having them open than, than you would think.
So, so in essence, we can't charge enough to justify that? Mr. Cullen?
For the record, Tom Cullen, Executive Director, Operations. We've never had to, in all the years I've been here, go out and look for people that want to reserve space in the schools. It's always been pretty heavy. There's usually a waiting list, and we have an employee, an FTE, that works on it to place these people and groups and organizations in all our schools. And there's a pecking order. So first option goes to all our athletic programs, all our school programs. Second usually goes to park and rec, and then third goes to any other outside groups policy.
So, so I understand that, so the statement is, we've never really had a problem filling or renting, and I understand we had projects that took fields and whatnot offline.
It was a portion of it.
But in essence, revenue was down. So if we have all these people, why aren't we bringing in more money?
That's a portion of it. We lost, one of the other questions we answered in more detail was, we lost two large church groups that we were pulling in over $10,000 each. They've opted and found other locations.
And have we learned from the reasons why they left?
Uh...
Do we know?
No.
And, and what's the reasoning for that? I mean, did we, did we try to find out? Or, I'm just trying to be curious as to, like, if we lose a big $10,000 client, if I were a business, I would want to know and do everything I could to try and find out, one, rectify the situation, retain them as, as clients, and if not, try and figure out what the reason they left. And is there anything we could do at a very minor expense to try and keep them or find another like organization?
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't done that, I'll be honest. We don't have a person that searches for organization in groups to book spaces in our schools. We don't also have the time to reach out to these groups when they don't reserve the following year or the next year.
So what is the, what does the one FTE do? I'm sorry, that you mentioned?
They book almost 6,000 groups and organizations, and she's, does that halftime. The other halftime, she's at the front reception desk.
Okay. I do have a problem with the statement that they don't have time to make a phone call and ask the church. The church can say, we just decided to go elsewhere. But I, I can't accept the idea that we don't have the time to, to make a phone call or two.
Didn't mean it to sound like that.
No, I, I understand, and I don't want you to think, there's no hostility here. But it, it's a, it's a, I, I believe it's a legitimate reason or, or thing to explore. So I just say it as a suggestion for the future. It's something that we could maybe focus on, and if we could, without adding staff expense or FTE, just somehow try and incorporate somebody, you know, just trying to find out if we lose a big client moving forward, what could we have done to kept that client, if anything? And that's, it's a simple ask, and that's all I'd like to know. Thank you.
Ms. Gerber?
Just to piggyback on that, because I asked about the building rentals as well, and it's page 13, number, question number 66. And you say here, each church paid a base room rental fee of $10,000 annually and significant custodial fees. Do you have any sense of how significant those custodial fees?
No, I didn't ask for a total of that, but I can get to that if you want.
Like thousands of dollars? Because, I mean, obviously, the 10,000 per church sounds significant, but if we were getting, if they were, they were paying, if we had custodial, I'm just trying to get a sense of...
Well, they book, they book every Sunday. So the church groups book every Sunday.
Right. No, no, I, I know, but I just, in terms of the number, just, it's hard to know exactly what the savings or cost or the net is if we don't know what the custodial piece of it was. Okay, thanks.
Ms. Mass canelli?
Well, first, I was going to just, well, through the chair to Mrs. Leeper, maybe make a request to follow up on Mr. Asa's question 52. I don't know if that's something that the Finance Committee would address regarding the, if we're charging comparable fees for our preschool to the, as, now that, as Mr. Asa pointed out, that we're going to a five-day schedule. So, wanted to put that out there. Next question, sorry. The Walter Fitzgerald campus, to, through the chair to Mr. Mancusi. Are we getting anywhere with advertising for out-of-district students to come in and pay that? We lowered our charge for that in the hopes that it would be more competitive and attract more.
We've spoken to the directors of our Fairfield County group, that we do have that availability. And we do look forward to, in the future, coming to the board... And we do look forward to, in the future, coming to the board with a proposal for our community partnership program, which we've also been contacted on for potential tuition students in the future. But what I would say for WFC, we have discussed this with the directors in the area, special ed directors.
So, to two separate topics then. So for the Walter Fitzgerald campus, it's simply ongoing and we still have no viable candidates at this time?
Currently, no.
And then separately, your point being that the community partnership might be something we haven't even talked about yet, but which now is looking like potentially a future source of?
We've been.
Out-of-district students?
Yes. It's something I've mentioned to Dr. Jones, that I've been contacted by another district with some interest.
Would that, and off the top of your head, Dr. Jones, would that come with any, something that we have to address in policy beforehand? Well, I'm hitting you out of the blue, but I wasn't expecting to hear that.
Yeah, the way the policy is written, we would have to bring it back to the board because it's CPP instead of WFC.
Okay.
So with anybody that's tuition-based, it needs to come back to the board.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, well, thumbs up for looking into that, so.
That's why I mentioned it. It's a kudos to the district, not to add confusion.
Okay, thank you. I'm sure, just to make sure the rest of my questions aren't on this one. I'll pass if anybody, I just have to see if I have any others for the income.
Ms. Jacob?
I'm curious why the revenue has gone down for summer school from 127, 684 to 115. Were we doing less programming during the summer?
Okay, page 17.
Question seven, thank you.
Top left, summer school. So it's going down from the budgeted 127 to 115. I do think, Mr. Mancusi, that was an anticipation of fewer students. Perhaps that is also tied to our enrollment decline in elementary as well.
Yes, it's really due to fewer students.
I have a follow-up. It's a follow-up.
The follow-up question is, are we not, I'm confused. Are we not competitive to some of the other summer school-type programs? Because I see messages all over Facebook all day long with people looking to do something with their kids in the summer. So I'm just curious how this is, I guess, a misunderstanding. Is this, is this strictly elementary school students? Is this across the board?
This, I believe, includes across the board.
Okay. I guess I'd make the same request then of the Finance Committee. Can we look into this to see how we can? I think in this town, a lot of people would love to send their kids to one of our schools for a program. Sorry, Jen.
No, I'm waving it, Christine. Mr. Dwyer?
My question is on the preschool tuition. I note on page 10 that Mr. Peterson asked a related question to preschool tuition. And on page 12, Mr. Asar asked a related question. I think Mr. Asar and I might be on the same wavelength in that, right now, we're looking at about a 4% increase in the tuition cost, which is essentially, you might almost say, just to cover inflation. And at least my experience says $4,000 for a full year of preschool education. What's that phrase, Mr. Asar, cheaper twice the price? And so I do encourage the Finance Committee, which we're piling up your work. I do encourage the administration and the Finance Committee to take a deeper look at whether our rates can't be made more competitive, understanding that we have an educational goal of having a 50% match in the ECC. And therefore, we want to encourage people to sign up for our preschool program so that we can accomplish that educational goal. So there's a reason to not be at the market. But I don't know whether there's a reason to be this far below the market. So I would only encourage a further look at that, not for tonight or Tuesday's budget, but just as we go forward.
Ms. Jacobson?
Back to the summer school line item. I know that we're, for revenue, the number is going down. However, our special ed summer school transportation is being significantly increased. But yet, we're being told there might be less students. So can we reconcile those two different things?
When we're talking about extended school year programming for students with disabilities, I'm differentiating that from the summer school program.
So this 115 is not from special ed summer school students? That's different, right?
I will follow up on that before I answer definitively. But in, when we're discussing extended school year programming versus summer programming.
Different.
For, yes.
Okay. All right, yeah, and I'm also interested, and I have been for a while, in terms of expanding our summer options. Fairfield historically hasn't offered, in their summer school programming, dissimilar to other districts, get-ahead classes. We only offer remediation classes, except for the computer class, which we no longer require anyway. So I was always curious as to why that was, and if we going forward can be offering more get-ahead classes in the summer as revenue generator. And also for the pre-K tuition, as a follow-up to Mr. Dwyer's statement, we also have to remember that the pre-K tuition is broken up between a third full paying, a third partial paying, and a third free. So that also has an impact, based on income, on that line item in terms of a revenue item. So it is a little more complicated.
Mr. Peterson?
I guess if anyone else has preschool questions they could ask, I was going to go on to Medicaid.
Does anybody else have a question on preschool? Okay, moving on to Medicaid.
So Ms. Jacobson and I, and I think Mr. Asan may have also mentioned something about Medicaid. It came up, your projection is, seems much more conservative than for last year, in your answer to the question.
If I could speak to that, just want to run back and get my Medicaid folder, because I can speak.
We just got an updated number July 19th. I don't know if you saw that, okay.
Because this is our first year receiving Medicaid reimbursement, and my experience with this in a previous district, you're right, the $50,000 is a very conservative projection. However, when that projection was made, we had limited reimbursement, and we have no historical data on how Fairfield would receive. I'm happy to say, our first six months, we're at about $49,000 in reimbursement. So our, our target for this year is 100%. I mean, $100,000, which it looks like we're gonna, we're gonna be near that. We are continuing to seek parental consents. We're at 57% right now of our parental consents for eligible students with disabilities, which I have to say, kudos to the staff. In our first year, that is an absolutely awesome percentage, something to be proud of. So once we get closer to 100% of consents, our projections will increase because we know our reimbursements will increase.
Yeah, that was actually a follow-up question based on the answer that you provided. How are we going about contacting parents and getting that consent? I mean, I do think for a first year, this seems like a good number, but there's a lot of upside to it, obviously. So what's the, what's the process in dealing with parents?
Well, there's many ways we've sought consent. We sent out several email blasts to parents in the, in the beginning, when we first got involved with the Medicaid program, with the question and answer document that the state provides us to provide parents, along with a copy of the Fairfield consent form, with a bulleted explanation of what the program includes, what it does not include, and how consent can be withdrawn at any time. Additionally, we provide parents copies of the Medicaid question and answer document at every PPT or every annual review when we're seeking consent. It's a pretty low-key process. We give it to the parents, answer any questions they have, along with all of the other PPT paperwork. And most sign there, some don't. And we really, that's how we, how we do it.
No, I mean, that's great. I really want to understand the process since this is new. And again, I'm very happy whenever I see something as conservatively budgeted with kind of financial upside.
And then we're required annually to send parents notification of, you know, the program and their right to withdraw consent at any time.
And just one last point on this. I imagine, though, that this, going forward, is probably going to be kind of volatile number. Because from year to year, the things that we would be able to bill for could vary widely.
Well, it's been pretty consistent on what we can bill for. It's all, it's all related services, nursing services, special transportation, which I say, I have to say, we're really good at. Keeping transportation logs, because we do get reimbursement for that. We're starting to develop a process for seeking reimbursement for out-of-district transportation logs. It includes speech therapy, it includes all evaluations such as psych evals, speech and language evals, psychiatric evals. That's really where you get a lot of reimbursement for the evaluations.
Great, well, I appreciate your efforts to collect this, thanks for your answer.
Thank you.
Ms. Max, Cannelly?
What is the, how big a jump is it, or impossible a jump is it, to also deal with private insurers? I thought that would get a big sigh.
We haven't gone there. We have not gone there to deal with private insurance. I mean, if a parent is seeking a service, they often will go through, through their own insurance. But that's not something that we do.
And couldn't, and I say this in utter ignorance, and could not do, and couldn't even inquire about, or? And if there's anything inappropriate about the question, I withdraw it quickly.
I would, this is my opinion as a parent of a child with special needs who spends a significant amount of out-of-pocket money for services outside of the school district that parents have to fight for, just their insurance companies to cover. So I think that it would be very difficult for any parent to be willing to give any insurance money they're getting from private insurance to the school district. Just.
Well, I would have thought it was coming from the parents, I would have thought it was direct between the. That's fine.
You kind of like, the insurance is coming, they're only going to cover the services, a certain amount of services. So it's a question of.
Oh, so it might be additional of the same type to what the district is doing?
I think it would be hard-pressed to get parents to sign up for that.
I think it would be. One of the biggest concerns, and actually probably the most frequent question we get from parents, and it's in the document that the state provides and that we provide, we altered it for Fairfield. And it is in Fairfield's consent form, is how does this impact my private insurance? And it does not impact your private insurance because it's a school-based child health program for eligible services that are clearly listed on a child's IEP. So we.
I'm backpedaling.
No, I just think anecdotally, it would probably not be worth investing any staff time to try to go after private insurance. Mr. Asa?
No follow-ups to this, right, to Medicaid, before I move on? Okay. So I have several questions on this next topic. I'll try and go through them as quickly as possible. If you referenced my question on page 11, number 56, regarding open choice. I had asked if you could confirm the current number. I did the math myself. And Dr. Jones, could you confirm that we are currently at 85 students?
I believe that's correct.
Okay. And that's what we budgeted for, 85 students for next year, correct?
I believe that's correct.
Okay. So, bear with me one second, I just want to read my question here. I had asked if you could provide the number of students graduating from FPS this year. And if we know of any that won't be returning, we may not. And it was said that we will update the BOE with that number at the meeting. I was just wondering if you had that information? Sorry, it's question number 56.
On page 11.
On page 11.
Of the new, of tonight's document?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't actually have that by grade. I can certainly, we can, if we have a five-minute recess, we could go get it in the office. But generally, it's between, I will tell you, it's usually between five and six students that will graduate.
Would the board?
Sometimes it's less than that.
Would the board be opposed to a quick recess to get that number?
Yes.
May I ask the chair to decide how to handle this?
May I ask, is it, is, if it's information that we?
It's gonna have a direct, it's gonna go to my question with regards to revenue and whether we could afford something or not.
So isn't, could that be part of Thursday's discussion, once we get, that if we can be emailed those numbers?
So, one of the things that the superintendent has said is that she's going to be looking to the board for guidance as to next year's number of students. And I think this directly plays into my questions.
Could I?
Mr. Dwyer?
Ms. Asa, the reason I objected is that, I object to the superintendent's last phrase in the answer to your question. From previous conversations, it would appear, this board can only make decisions while we are together and by vote. This board has only taken one vote on this subject. And that is to have a target, if space is available, to move up to 100 students. To suggest that by conversation, we might direct the superintendent not to do that, when in fact, we've put on a plan submitted to the state that that is our goal, I think would put our chair in an awkward situation in May, saying, "You told the state you were going to do this, but privately, you just decided you're not going to."
Well, this is an open meeting, and with all due respect, Mr. Dwyer, under your chairmanship.
May I finish my sentence?
Let Mr. Dwyer finish.
Sorry.
Thank you. And so I believe this board, if it wishes to change that target, should be notice that that's the subject of the meeting, and address that at Thursday, if it's part of the budget discussion, with a specific proposal from this board that says, "We've looked at it, and for good and just reasons, we're going to go from 100 back down to 85," or whatever number that you want to put out. But I would rather have that as an open discussion that would lead to a board vote on that topic than just a, quote, "conversation" that gives guidance to the superintendent. So that's, my only purpose for objecting is that I'd like to have it at a time where this board could have a full discussion on it, rather than as part of a, kind of a quick budget decision.
Okay, I understand where you're coming from, but we did have a conversation for it last year and gave the superintendent guidance. And at that time, the majority of the board said they would like to increase the number.
Correct, and that's where we are.
So I would, I would like to go further. So Mrs. Vitalia's chair, would you like me to continue and forget the recess?
Any objections to taking a five-minute recess besides Mr. Dwyer? Just to get the number in terms of where we are, in terms of grad, you just want the number for graduating?
The number that we know for sure that, yes, graduating. And if the majority of the board doesn't want to do it, it's fine, I'll move on.
Well, I would just say that the number could be made available to us for Thursday.
I mean, the subject can continue as a hypothetical, and we'll have it more concretely. And when we get the number via email and have the conversation on Thursday.
Okay, I'll move on.
Okay.
So, with regards to this, we're at 85, we're budgeting for 85 students. And the gist of my question was, let's say hypothetically, we were having 10 students graduate, and we dropped down to 75. Okay, hypothetically. If we were to not bring that number back to where we were, my question is with regards to the implication of the lost revenue. As I understand it right now, the current 85 students is bringing in revenue to create 2.0 FTEs. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, if we lost 10 students hypothetically, and we went to 75, would we be able, what would the budget implications be with those two FTEs? And would we be able to move forward in this budget if we reduced it to, let's say, just the number of students that are currently enrolled, not replacing graduating students?
I'm not sure I can answer that with the way that it was asked. But if you think about each open-choice student, we get $3,000 per student. But it's actually more complex than that because we also have special education revenue that comes into the district. So, you know, you're talking about a half million dollar of revenue in this, in this budget. You know, that is brought in from open choice. So obviously, if you bring that number down, it's going to change both of those revenue line items. it's going to change both of those revenue line items. And we do, we are very strategic about where we do place students to, you know, make sure that the revenue that's coming in is able to be used in a positive way for the district.
Okay. So if a student that, if we were still servicing, let's say, 75 instead of 85, we would still be billing for that additional fees that we're calling revenue, but if, it's still, it's covering the expense, correct? So we're not, by not replacing students, it doesn't mean that we're negatively impacting the existing students because we'd still be billing for the services for the students that are in our system, correct?
Yeah, you don't, but you don't really look at it that way. I mean, that's truly, we do that from an economic standpoint across the country, not just in Fairfield where you use a per pupil amount. That is really not what it costs to educate every child. And so, you know, some children may not have any services or they're not in the gifted program or they're not, you know, they don't have any services. And then some children actually may need more services and that's what they need. Some children are in athletics and music. Those children cost more than children who don't take any electives with us and they do everything and go compete in soccer and their parents pay for all that. So, you can't really look at it through that lens.
Okay. So just for the record, from a social justice standpoint, forgetting racial imbalance because this isn't solving racial imbalance. That is clear. We've discussed it at the table. Our open-choice program, even if we went to 100, is not going to solve racial imbalance. So at this point, my take is we are doing this as a, as a social justice thing, which I support. However, my purpose of this discussion is, what I'm about to say does have budget implications. And what I would like to see is I would like to see us finally complete Mill Hill. I would like to see us have the discussions in February about facility utilization, ECC, and everything that's going to go into that. And at that point, once we discuss things like potential redistricting of the town and where children will be and where our space is and when we no longer have portables, let me be clear, we still have portables in this district and they may still be there because I don't know what's going to happen with Mill Hill. We put forth EdSpecs of 504 on Mill Hill and the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen are telling us that they may want a 378 or a 441 school. And that changes things because right now, Mill Hill is a 470-something school with the portables. So if we take away those portables and Mill Hill winds up being a 378 or 441, it changes the dynamics of our school system and our district. And what I would like to see is let us continue open choice with the students that we have, the ones that we are currently serving. I fully support the students that are in our system. What I would like to see, as I say, and again, this comes with budget implications, so I'm not sure how to push this discussion out beyond Thursday, really, because the board, if it doesn't give guidance or the superintendent doesn't make a decision, are we going to stick at 85? Are we going to go to 100? The budget calls for 85. And if we do that, then we've budgeted for it. But if this board were to say, okay, and they're probably not, but if we went to the number of students that are currently enrolled and not replace the exiting students that have graduated out, I don't see why we can't wait until we finish what we are doing, our board goal, Mill Hill, everything else, and then relook at everything and taking racial imbalance out from a social justice aspect, look at where we have space, look at the budget implications, and then maybe we'll be able to take in more kids or not. I don't know. But again, I do support the idea of open choice. What I don't support is taking in more students until we have gotten rid of every single portable in this district. Mill Hill is decided and we decide as a board what we're going to do from February on. I think I'm done.
Mr. Dwyer.
Through you to the superintendent, when do we have to provide the available seats to CES?
It's usually around April, assuming that the budget goes as intended this year at the state level.
Mr. Asa, as oftentimes with a budget, you budget a number that is based on what you think is going to happen. And every year, you have to make adjustments because the revenue didn't quite come in or the expense was more than you expected. And Mrs. Monsell and our staff have been pretty good in making those adjustments. We have until February and even March to have continued conversation on this topic. And if your guess is right that the board will stay committed to open choice, then that's what the board will decide to do. But I don't think we have to do it in light of the budget process. I think we have to do it with proper timing for the April commitment to CES. So I don't wish to extend the debate because we have the whole budget to get through, but I do encourage that we not continue to debate a subject that's not really on the agenda specifically.
I strongly disagree with that statement with all due respect.
Mrs. Maxine Cannelly.
Through the chair to Mr. Asa, are you suggesting that you are going to be making a proposal on Thursday which has budget number implications, meaning you'll be requesting to Dr. Jones more, having heard what she said about an estimate, but obviously, we're talking about cutting income, meaning either you're going to be proposing a budget increase, you Republicans, or you're going to be talking about an offset of, and a cut of this to make up for it. Because then obviously, you're going to need to have those numbers and then you'll present that to us on Thursday. And so I'm just, through the chair to Ms. Asa, is that what you're proposing doing?
Well, this is why I wanted that number and I wanted to get a sense of the board because if the sense of the board and the majority of the board is that we're going to stick with 85, I'm not going to waste the board's time. So I don't know how to answer that question. I see what you're asking, but yes, I would like, personally, I've made it, I'm on the record saying I would like to keep open choice. I would like to keep it with the number of students that are currently enrolled, not graduating, and not replace them at this time.
Okay, so...
So, yes, there would be budget implications. However, if this is falling on deaf ears and the majority of the board is going to say no, as Mr. Dwyer says, then I'm not going to waste the board's time going further.
Thank you.
I have two, Mr. Dwyer, no, Ms. Sleeper, sorry. I didn't see your hand up.
Through the chair to Mr. Asa, are you concerned that this is going, this might sound snarky and I don't mean it to, I always want to make sure I'm understanding, like hypothetically, 10 students we're adding to the district, that if we're getting rid of the two portables at Mill Hill, hypothetically, the five portables, that finding space for 10 children across our 10 elementary schools is a hardship for the district?
To answer your question, what I am saying is until there are no portables in the district, I don't want to bring more students into the district until that is solved.
Even though our projections show we're still having declining enrollment?
Correct.
Okay.
Ms. Pitcairn.
I have to agree with Mr. Asa, mostly because we're going to have such tough discussions in February about what to do with all of our facilities. So how do we bring more children in where we have to talk about each of our elementary schools, including Mill Hill?
Staff did look up the number. We have two at Ludlow and four at Ward who will be graduating. Six total. Yes.
Ms. Jacobson.
Not to belabor the point, but to kind of answer the question of how are we bringing more children in is because we haven't amended our plan. And we have a plan that's, in order to do that, we'd have to take a vote on amendment to the plan and then get it approved by the State Board of Ed. That, that's, whether or not all of us agree with exactly what you're saying or don't agree, the issue is, is that we have the plan.
We're not following it now.
What do you mean?
It's the next number and we're not there.
Right. So there were...
We are following the plan. We are following, we are following the plan and...
If we were following the plan, we'd be at 100.
We are, we are taking students based on whether or not we can afford to take them.
That's not in the plan.
Can I comment on that?
Yes.
From a technical point of view, Mrs. Jacobson is right. However, the reason we're not quite at 100 yet is because in the year that the state decided not to make a decision on educational funding until the fall, our superintendent, I think correctly, said, let's wait until we know where we are. And then once we knew where we are. So there was good and just reasons why we're not quite at the target. That does not mean we're not following the plan because we are, but we had a good and just reasons why we had to skip a year to see where things were. And that's why I think, both of you, I think, are correct. But we're following the plan, but we're not quite at the target we thought we would be at this year.
So I'm going to, for Dr. Jones, that the money, the number of students that you're budgeting for is based on you looked at the availability of space in the district and you are going to put students in schools, in sections, that will not require us to add a FTE, that will not increase costs.
That's correct.
And if those students have special needs, then we will service those students and we will bill the sending district for those services.
That's correct.
Okay. We are not going to, we're not, this is part, we do have a racial imbalance plan, so we are not...
Just so you know, it's $18,000. Six times, six times three.
Right.
That's the number for the budget.
Okay. What I was going to say is we're not, you know, rewriting our racial imbalance plan right now. Later on, in the agenda, there will be a chance from BEMR's to suggest if they want to make any, you know, budget adjustments. And, Mr. Asa, if you want to make a budget adjustment, I think that at that time, that would be the time to say it. Any more questions on revenue? Mrs. Maxine Cannelly?
Just one, and I know I should know this by my eighth time, but my question was regarding question 83, switching to school lunch. Again, part of our point for getting a management...
Democrats.
Yeah, I know. We're all about the school lunch. But when we went to Whitson's as management, the idea was that it was going to be a more efficiently-run, produce money, and for the life of me, I don't remember why that does not factor into our budget.
Ms. Monsell is coming forward.
It's not a budget implication because it's a guaranteed profit. So there's no, the program itself costs nothing to the district, even if the program loses money. There's a guaranteed profit from Whitson's.
Okay, so I would have equated profit to income. That's the part I can't remember.
Ms. Dwyer.
I know this will send shutters down your back, Mrs. Maxine Cannelly, but this was a similar question that Mr. Llewellyn asked.
We were, look, he sat right next to me. It doesn't send shutters down at all.
And the answer is basically this, that the food service account operates as its own fund. It is not negatively or positively impact the school budget, the operating budget. Whatever revenue they produce stays with the fund and is used, if there's a surplus, to help purchase new equipment each year and be a kind of a running balance to pay advance costs of food supplies and all the rest. So it is, the school district does not expect to take a loss, nor does it expect to make a profit because it's a standalone fund.
Which I guess I, I understood, that's my historical memory of it, but also this point, I guess, since it's a guaranteed profit, I guess that's what I don't understand as it having no, again, I guess, when we were organizing it, I understood better why we always wanted to make sure we had that bank of funds, you know, that, to sustain the program. But since it is now a guaranteed minimal profit, that's what I'm not understanding.
And perhaps that's a question for Ms. Monsell to say, if we chose to treat it as a profit center, would state law and other things allow for that?
If you remember, at one point in time, we, the food service program was paying for utilities, that kind of thing. It could potentially pay for something like that, but I'd caution the board and, because it was making so much, it had accumulated so many, so much in funding over the years that I think we dug into it too deep and put it in a, in a bad, you know, situation. So I would caution the board going there again, and I think we need more time to continue to build the program before we would accumulate a fund balance substantial enough to go there, make it worthwhile for the board. You see what I mean?
And that really is the big difference between this contracted service and having your own food service program. Because if we have our own staff, our own program, it's very difficult to keep food service in the black. And when it's in the red, it comes out of everything else.
Revenue question. I actually have a follow-up question on page 16. It was one of Jen Maxine Cannelly's questions. Sorry. Oh, well, how lovely of you.
Oh, look at her.
Yeah, seriously. Thank you so much. I know. We're not, we're not at that point yet. Number, question number 81. I'm just trying to understand the answer, or just the question in general, where we, where Jen asked about ECS dollars and preschool tuition that we didn't anticipate getting but did actually get this year. And it's also pertinent to Thursday's conversation, obviously, but it may impact other adjustment areas. And I'm interested in the answer. So, when it says, you know, those funds go to the government, once our budget is set, if those funds go up or down, we do not benefit or suffer from the consequences of that, what, I don't understand what that means.
Basically, the key is, I think, on page 16, a lot of people missed just that very, the title right at the top, revenue to the town. So, you know, when we put our budget forth, if we're funded at 175 million, we get 175 million. So if the first selectman didn't count on ECS and then all of a sudden it comes in at a million dollars, it's on the town side. We don't all of a sudden get an additional million dollars in our school budget. Our school budget is what our school budget is.
In the town...
But that is why, I think, you know, when we talked about giving that 600,000 back at the end of last year, I think that that was very much from a school perspective, feeling like that was the right thing to do because when we lost those several million dollars of ECS funding on those previous years, our town did not come to the school district and say, we did not get those millions of dollars in revenue, we want you to take that out of your budget and take your school budget down. Some localities actually did that, if it flows through the town, like ours does.
Yes, I understand that. So what is the million dollars going towards?
It goes into the town budget. I mean, that's, the first selectman manages, you know, that with his finance staff. So it doesn't, we show the revenue for education cost sharing, but in this town, it goes through the town. So we don't, it doesn't all of a sudden...
But ECS dollars has to be spent on education.
Well, they can, I don't know how their bookkeeping works, but they can validate they spend a million and 91,000 for sure on education. So I'm sure there's some sort of transfer or something that happens on their end. I don't know, Ms. Monsell, if you know how they handle that, but that would be probably a question better asked to Bob Mayer.
Yeah. I think that really, I don't want to take up the time to answer that because that is on the town side. So I would follow up with Mr. Mayor or the first selectman. And I think part of that question also is going to be, the rest of that question, I think is going to be covered when we go into staff salaries, in terms of the shortfall. Any final question on revenue? Okay, seeing none, moving on to staff salaries, pages 26 through 27.
And if we could start with these charts, it would probably be helpful, I think.
Ms. Monsell, are you wanting to start with this chart tonight first? Okay. We're going to start with the one that has the columns with the different colors.
Okay, so we're looking at the staff replacement 2018, 2019 sheet that was at your seat. Okay, so we're looking at the staff replacement 2018-2019 sheet that was at your seat.
Okay, this, this document shows how we budgeted for staff replacement and where we have the shortfall. There's two, there's two blocks of information. The one on top says September 2018. That's the information that I reported in the first quarter report. So the updated information that's in the budget book is down below in the block below that says December 2018. I'm going to concentrate on those numbers, since those are, you know, more recent. So in the yellow, what we do when we budget staff salaries is we actually take the people on staff at the time that we start the budget process. And we advance them to, you know, salary schedules for next year, at their FTEs that they're at, and actually come up with a total salary, budget salary. And then, what we've done in turnover is if you, if you look in the yellow boxes, we budget turnover for certified staff, column one, at three, a negative $350,000, and non-certified, a negative $110,000. That has been consistent ever since I've been here. There's, I don't know where the numbers came from, it's just numbers that have been carried forward over time. The retirees have changed year to year, depending on the number of retirees we anticipate. So for this year, we did, budgeted for 19 at $40,000 for the negative 760. So it's a total of, for certified, $1,110,000, and non-certified, $110,000. So that total, 1.220, was actually deducted. That's why it's a negative number. It's, you know, people have asked this over the years, how can you have a negative number in the budget? It just takes everything that's in there for staff salaries and actually subtracts it out. So we are taking that amount of money out of salaries for the people who are here at the time when we start the budget, in anticipation of retirees and turnover. The next set of blocks in green, that's column four, is the actual turnover savings that we've realized so far. So it's 321 for certified and 324 for non-certified, for a total of nearly $650,000. That's turnover. The next column is actual retiree savings realized, three, almost 370 for certified and 111 for non-certified, for a total of 481. So the total, next column, total actual realized savings, is a total of 1.127 million. So we have realized savings, but there's other things that that savings has historically covered and needs to cover. The next column in pink is the unbudgeted staff, the 10-point, we have a 10.9 unbudgeted staff. This is for 10.6, because .3 was in a grant. So that unbudgeted staff is 416,000. We have to cover that also. That, so you subtract that from the 1.127, you come out to realized saving of 711,000. That's in my write-up in the budget book, opposite the budget summary. So that net, when you subtract out those numbers, the net realized savings is the 711. That leaves us a balance, so if you take the negative 1.220, and you add the 711 to it, you have a net balance of a negative, I rounded it up to 50, 510 in the, in the budget book. So we're still in a hole. Now, up till now, these are all actual numbers at this point in time. Now we have to get into forecasting land. So the next column, column 10, is projected leave of absences. When we're notified that a person that's on a leave of absence is going to return, we have to cover their salary. And if there's any vacancies that we don't have in our staff payout, we have to make sure that we have money to fund those. So that totals 227. That's a projection. So we think we are going to need 227,000 to cover those kinds of things. That brings us to the next column of a negative 735. On top of that, you, you know, we've always, we, you know, that in the budget, we, our sub accounts are always over budget, because they are, they've historically been that way, because there's, there's usually a correlation between savings and staff, if they're out on leave of absence or whatever, and the cost of substitutes. So if somebody's out, we have a sub, as long as they're out and not being paid, you're going to have some savings. If they're out and being paid, you're going, you're paying twice. So that gets us to the negative 735. The unprojected, unbudgeted sub-cost, and then other part-time employment, like overtime or...
Clerical custodial.
Clerical subs, you know, special ed, summer school, that kind of staffing that goes over, we have to cover that. That is projected at 483. So that gets us to the 1.2 million that's in the budget book as a negative number. That's the hole that we have. Do I still have everybody at this point?
I might have, when we shared this with the Board of Finance, it was really to try to, our Board of Finance, our committee, thank you. It really was trying to get the picture kind of from left to right, why you have those shortages. And a lot of people don't realize that when we have somebody that's on a leave of absence, if we have a lot of those on any given year, you're paying two salaries for one job. Because if a teacher is out for, whether that's sick leave, could be having a baby, you're paying that person's salary who's on leave, but we also have to pay somebody to replace them in the classroom. And some years, you have more of that than others. But if you don't have the turnover savings, and I think the next chart you'll look at, you'll be able to see that as well, a little clearer.
Yep. So if there's no questions on that, we'll go to this next chart that says, "Staff Replacement History and Subcost."
Are there any questions on this before we move forward? Okay.
Yep.
Just the first in the, in the yellow, that area where you said you don't really know where the turnover budgeted savings number came from, it's just a historical number that's been plugged in there. Is there any way we can do a, something to maybe get that more accurate, or, I mean...
I think you'll see in the next...
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so the next document, if you, this somewhat repeats what we just went over on how we budget, but it's going back historically. So the first column is the 1415 budget. There's the 350 and the 110 for the total of 460. That's all that we, that, so at that point in time, we only showed in staff replacement, a negative 460 for turnover. At that point in time, in 1415 and 1516, we budgeted retirees in salary accounts. So HR would tell us where they thought there was going to be retirees, and we would actually go into their salary account and, and take the money out of there. If you remember, we had, we had an account with one person in it, and we anticipated a retiree, and the poor person had a heart attack when they saw that. That's when we stopped that practice. We, we took all the retirees, instead of putting them in actual line items, we incorporated that in, in staff turnover. Okay, so at, in 1415, we budgeted the negative 460. The actual savings in turnover was a total of 1.814. So we had a variance of $1,354 to the good. Now, some of that may have been realized in these two years in salary accounts, but for this particular account, it's just the 1.34. Down below, this is where we have the history on the subs. We budgeted 840, but subs actually cost us 1.9 million that year. So there was, the variance of $1,070 was covered by that 1.34 million up on top. So that's the history, you know, that's one year. If you go over to 1516, the same scenario where we budgeted retirees in the account, we just used the 460. Our actual attrition savings was $1,531 for a net of $1,071. Subs cost 1.658. So we had, the variance is a 721. So in 1617, here's where we started the, including retirees in here. That 998 is for 18 retirees at $36,000. And then we, the, where's the 350? The three, it's 648 plus 350 is in that 998. So we were deducting 1.1 million.
Doreen, can you use the column numbers to help?
Yeah.
Use the column numbers?
The whole number?
Yes, please.
The actual cost, I'll just do totals, though. The actual costs were $2,324,881 for the variance of 924, 924,048.
So you're on column six.
I'm sorry?
Yeah.
Column six.
Yeah.
And I would think after this one, we can jump to column nine and 10. So in substitutes, it was $1,600,660, and that difference is a 618. And I think I'll, I'll skip 1718, but, you know, jump forward to 1819, where we're in now. We had the 19 retirees at 40,000 for, at seven, which is 760 plus the 350, makes up the $1,110. And the 110,000 we've been carrying for non-certified, for a total of 1.1,220,000. And here's our projected cost for the difference of 735, projected savings, I rather. And then substitute cost down below, total of $1,500,941. The variance is the negative 386, plus the other part-time costs that I was talking about, the overtime, special ed, interns, that kind of thing, is the $97,000 for total sub-cost of a negative 483, 690, 669. So the difference between the 738, 735, 864 that we realized, or didn't realize, and the cost of the 483, 483,669, is the budget deficit of $1,219,533. So, I mean, the reason why we did that is because, you know, the first, the first document shows what we, how we budgeted for this year. The second document shows historically how it's worked for us in the past. It just didn't do that this year. So...
And I think, too, Doreen, there's, there are two things in that column nine and 10, and one is at the top, it really is that attrition number, which, the good side to that, and we've talked about that, we want to keep our staff. There are cost savings in other areas, like retraining, you know, mentors and stipends, but, but it still had an impact this year, because it was an unusual trend for us. I think down on the bottom, although it, you know, sub-cost does run over, I commend our staff, when you look at all subs, 1718 it was, if you look at the actuals, 1.2 million. Compare that to the three previous years at 19, 16, 16. So we also have fewer subs. I mean, we really are trying, the staff are doing a really good job and working on that. So I just, I think I have to point that out, even though it's a scary number. And this year, we're looking at the 1.5 is projected. But they're working very hard to make sure that we're only using subs when we absolutely have to have them.
The other thing I'd like to point out in line two, the non-certified attrition, if you go across that line, the actual, in 1415, column two was 151,782. 1516 was 318,203. The next year, column six is 293,559. Last year's was 28,455, and we're at this year at 421,388. That's unusual. So it's, it's actually helping significantly this year, but that's unusual that, thank goodness that it did that, but that's not something that you can count on all the time, I think, like you would count on teacher turnover. So...
Can I just ask relative to that, where was the, where was the churn in the non-certified Who do we, who do we lose more, I guess I'm...
Who do we lose more? I think it's, it's been, well, there's always, there's always turnover in Paris, but I think, I think we lost a lot more custodians and, or turned over custodians and secretaries.
Mr. Dwyer?
Not a question, but a question, do I have a correct understanding? Maybe 15 years ago, the Board of Finance started realizing that we were saving money with teacher retirement and never budgeted for it. And they asked us the question, "How many are retiring, and what credit do you have?" And so we started budgeting a negative number there. And about five years ago, they started noticing that we were also seeing a savings in non-certified staff. And so we started budgeting for that savings. The good news is, this past year, we've had less turnover and less retirees. And so therefore, we missed our target. We were overly aggressive, based on a three-to-five-year history, and that history has changed. And so therefore, if you take the 630 swing from budget to budget for staff replacement, and then I add to that the 267,000 or so in increased staff costs because of IEPs that require those new staff, our increase in staff salaries comes down to 3.4, give or take by my math, which is slightly below what the teacher's contract had been agreed to, and doesn't even take into account whatever staff we might have had to add for enrollment in some place or another. So while the $630,000 swing is not good news, when you look at the fact that we don't have turnover and we have kept our senior teachers, it's good news. Am I, is, am I reading that correct? Forgetting all the numbers, your job is the numbers, but is that the correct assumption?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions? Ms. Jacob, Mr. Dwyer?
Sorry.
We're projecting a loss of 61 elementary school students, which is continuing the trend in elementary school. And we're making it up on the middle school and high school. And five years from now, we'll see a boost in elementary and start seeing a decrease somewhere else. And that's just the nature of it. When I look at page 167, the capacity of our elementary schools, including the CLCS students and the CLC students and the pre-K students, all told, we have a capacity of That's on page 167.
Oh.
I think I've read those numbers correct, that we have 800 more seats than we need next year. Am I correct? I'm asking out of, through the, through the chair, to the superintendent.
Yes, I was just looking for the elementary number exactly.
On page 167, it says the capacity of our elementary schools, including the CLCS, CLC, and pre-K, 4,828.
Right, it's the difference between 4,828 and 4,095 that were projected, yes.
So 850 extra seats.
Assuming that every class was maxed out, yes.
And that never happens.
Never.
But putting a, putting a student in an empty seat where it's all, it's only going to be empty, we have room.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anybody else have a question about this? I have a question about the, for those sections that are one or two below the class size threshold, how are you, are you budgeting any extra teachers for, you know, just in case we go over?
Let's see what we did here. One sec, I'm just looking at the other chart. Ms. Munsell, do you remember? We didn't, I don't think. I think we went exactly, because summer, summer went away, summer went less. So we actually just took out the ones where the number is there, that it is, that it's below, which is, I'm trying to find the other, sorry, I just had it.
That's okay.
Our elementary sheet that shows all the changes, that chart's very helpful.
No, that's where you...
No, the pretty colorful one, because it, it's easy to read. I've just lost it, I just had it. My pages must be sticking together. Page 137 is where you can actually see the 4.0 in the elementary teachers. And then you can correlate that back to the grid. And so on the bottom of page 129, you see the four?
Yeah.
Yeah. Sorry, we should put these next to each other next time, these two charts.
I do see that. I guess I was just, I'm more curious about just those, the one and two below class, just in years past, I think you've taken into consideration, like, we may be better, be better budget for an extra FTE because if we go over in one of these sections, we're going to need to hire another person. And is that taken into consideration all in this budget, that, you know, a couple extra kids, and you might be looking at needing another FTE that's unbudgeted for?
It's taken in consideration in that we do go ahead and plug in those sections that we expect by projection to go up. And it is kind of, it's a tricky thing to do, because if you look at like Riverfield's kindergarten, you have Sherman kindergarten, those are solely based on projections and not cohorts. You have Holland Hill. So if we were to come back and say that we were just going to build in, for instance, two or three extra teachers, we're really talking about having some sort of contingency for staffing. We have never done that in Fairfield. I will say, this is the first district I've ever been in where we don't have a contingency that is very small, but, you know, a half million dollars for unforeseen staffing. So we are expected to really use our projections to the T. And what ends up happening is one of those kindergartens won't come in, and you end up having to either move a teacher or within that building, you move the kindergarten, like at Sherman, we moved a kindergarten to fifth grade this year because that's where the growth was instead of kindergarten. And generally, that's, yeah.
Okay. I mean, I guess I'm looking at Riverfield, fifth grade, that's at 75 right now, three sections of 25.
Right.
You know, one or two kids, and then you could be looking at needing to hire another FTE.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah. And you hope that, like, that kindergarten may not come in, because they're small.
Right, so it's, you know, I just wanted to point that out to the board in terms of... Ms. Jacobson?
So just to follow up on that line of discussion, there's, there's four, right? There's four possible?
Mm-hmm.
And so that, those four possible additions are unbudgeted?
Five.
Five?
No.
Now, if you look on the bottom of page 129, on the far right, you'll see it's four sections.
The net, is that what you're saying? The net?
From all the changes.
But that's based on projections.
Well, and, and well...
Not necessarily the five that are in gray.
Right.
Well, really, the, the one cohort that is very much based on projection is kindergarten, because that is really Melona McBroom telling us what to expect. The cohort growth in Fairfield, which means first graders going to second grade, is really very consistent. And, you know, if you look at us as a system, that kindergarten through 12th, our Melona McBroom projections are very, very good. So we feel pretty, you feel pretty confident on those other grade levels. It's usually kindergarten. And it's usually a shift from one school to the other.
Right.
Like, the overall number will be very, very, very close, but...
Okay, so then, there's five possible additions, but the net is four because of where you're expecting a decline, so to speak. So those four possible additions that are very close are unbudgeted at this time.
Yes, make sure I understood the question. We, we have reduced, if you look on that other page we were talking about before, four sections, yes, in the budget for, because we have declining enrollment. But you don't, this helps you understand where you think they're going to be, but you won't know until we actually enroll students. And I will say, one thing that we have really changed in the last two years is we are not adding teachers in June and July. We used to go by our projection, you were getting close on the threshold, we don't know, we no longer do that. We literally wait until our children, you know, are, we're enrolling, we have, our secretaries are back in the offices, and we can confirm that every student is actually still with us. Because in elementary, you don't have that person to do that work, you know, over a large part of the summer. And that's helped a lot. That's helped us be much tighter about adding teachers and not, oops, on the first day of school, we probably didn't really need that teacher because three students moved over the summer and we didn't know it. We're confirming all of our kids, so it's really pretty tight.
So does that mean we're not doing that hiring until the last couple of weeks in August and getting...
If we, yeah.
Whatever teacher hasn't gotten another job.
Yes, but what I will say is that right now is not really the issue for us because we're moving teachers. It tends to be the two teachers who are sitting out and waiting, and it's, and we don't like to do it, but it's what we have to do to figure out which building they're actually going to go to. So we may tell them in June, when they go off to summer, here's where we think there's going to be an opening, you know, at Strathfield and kindergarten, but we will have to watch where that movement happens. And if their kindergarten doesn't eventuate, then where does that teacher go? Who is, we have a contract with, and, you know, they're employed. And usually, it's either they're going to go replace somebody who's not returning, leave of absence for the year. But that's the biggest challenge really, is people that are already employed with us, where are they going to get moved to? It's not very many, it's usually two or three in the last couple of years.
Ms. Jacobson?
Within their certification area.
Oh, yeah, we don't move them, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. But, you know, sometimes we do have a, you know, a first-grade teacher who, who has taught, you know, years of fourth grade, and they weren't necessarily the teacher you were going to move, so you have to move them to fourth grade to make room for somebody who's only ever taught early childhood. Yeah, it's tough, but with declining enrollment, it's just part of what we have to do.
I just want to say, we have, if the number of possible additions was large, we, we did budget for contingencies.
Yeah.
This year.
Right. Yeah, I didn't understand that either. I don't understand that.
In this year, the sections, the, the difference in the sections was five, but the, the ones that were one to two below the threshold were seven. So we did, we did budget an additional two people.
Okay. I did not remember that. That's good.
Thank you. Because I do remember that being just in past budget discussions.
And I, we've done it before, I think, too.
But we're not doing it this year?
Any other questions? Okay, moving on to, retirement? Any more questions about retirement? Seeing none, moving on. Retirement, any questions?
Yeah, when do we start contacting staff about declaring their intention? I mean, that, that, obviously, it's not binding, but...
I, I don't know when it went out. I signed a letter last week, so it's very, it's soon. I don't know if it's gone out yet, but it's getting ready to.
And what is usually, I mean, you're not going to make somebody declare any more quickly than they're willing to do so, but what is usually the turnaround? Is it an immediate, you get a sense, or is it really a, we don't trust anything until what?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know statistically. All I can give you is kind of qualitative. It's usually towards the end of the year before. Number one, people are very private. Sometimes they don't want everybody to know they're retiring, they don't want all the parties, they just want to sneak out, you know? So you have those people who just, they don't want to say anything. And then you have some who really are trying to figure out their financials and whether or not they really can retire. You know, they have to have a lot of meetings in the spring with people to advise them on, you know, just leave and all of those sorts of things. So it's usually in the, end of the year. And we have people who just show up in the summer, have just made that decision. They went home, they had a few weeks at home and went, wow, this is awesome, I'm, I'm ready. And then they just come in and they, you know, we, we didn't think maybe they were really going to retire. So it's, it's different every year, but it starts at the very end of the year and all the way through the summer.
Okay, thank you.
Can I...
Ms. Jacobson?
So in this area, I'm really glad that we're going to a little bit more conservative way of budgeting for this. I'm still concerned with the actual ratio for next year that we've put in. Can you share a little bit in the probability model that was done for 1920, why are we're going to be expecting a little bit better return than we got for this year? Was there something in particular in this year's stats that made it seem better?
And where are you looking? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm on, well, I'm using the...
Question 19.
Yeah, question 19. Thank you.
I will say, this is the third year where, which I spoke about that in the presentation. Dr. Rasmussen looks at actual, our staff, for all of those staff between, that are 55 and older, and literally looks at what is the percentage or the likelihood that somebody will retire at any of those ages, and uses that, that calculation. The first year here, it was 24 for 24. This year, we had 19 in the budget. We, we've ended up having 16 right now. For next year, you know, he's done exactly that same calculation again. And I think, Ms. Munsell, can you correct me on the retirements? I think we went a few lower than his actual projection, just to play a little bit safer this year.
17 to 21.
Yeah. But we also have adjusted the amount of retiree savings. And that's because this year, it goes back to not necessarily retirees, but the turnover rate, because we would have an experienced teacher leave, and then we were replacing them with another experienced teacher. And that, that happens a lot in special education. If you can get that dynamite teacher from another district, if they're at the top, kind of a top-scale teacher, areas like physics and, you know, mathematics and all those shortage areas, we tend to, if we have more secondary teachers leave, it's usually more expensive than elementary, generally.
So is our hiring practice right now that we're trying to replace as much as humanly possible, experience for experience, rather than saying, well, we're going to, if somebody for 20 years, you know, either retires or what have you, we're not going to try to get a step one?
Here's my philosophy on that, is that, you know, federal law governs that you can't judge who you're going to hire based on age, that's discrimination.
Well, not age, experience.
But that generally goes with experience. And what I tell the principals and headmasters when they're hiring is we want who's best for our children. So if, if you are interviewing a candidate and they're going to be amazing for our children, we may lose a teacher that's step 15, and maybe this teacher's step 15, that's who we should have with our children, if that's who they believe is best. But it does make it harder to budget.
Yeah, no, I understand. And a step one could be a second-career person who is just as the same age. It's nothing about the age, it's about the experience. Okay, all right, so that's good to hear, thank you.
Any other questions on retirement, retirees? Okay, seeing none, moving on, section benefits, page 28 to 29. Anybody?
What are the details pages for that?
6970.
What is it?
6970?
Thank you.
Anything? Okay. Seeing none, moving on to operation and maintenance of buildings, page 40 to 41. Thank you, Ms. Munsell.
Start with a big chart, I think that would be helpful for him. You're big, you know, that was the question. Maintenance chart.
And we have the proposed maintenance projects chart at your seat.
Love that.
So one of the questions the board had asked was about the projects that didn't get, make it into the budget. How do we prioritize the ones, twos, and threes? And we tried to blow this real big for you, because there's, there's a lot on it. So the first thing Mr. Cohen does is go through, and he has his priorities, one, two, and three. And then we sit down together, we go back through them again. Sometimes some will, some items that are one move to twos, but you can actually see how many things are actually on this list. And there's a lot that we would like to have put in the budget. And the yellow on the front page that you're looking at, few on the back, on the second page are the items that are in the Board of Ed operating.
Mr. Peterson?
Just looking at the, at the proposed maintenance projects and the prioritization, I noticed a couple of things that are priority two are, the reason is ADA compliance. How, how are those things, I'm not a higher priority, I guess is my question. One of them is, it looks at the wood, the ward, the woods, rather, elevator. And one of them is a playground accessibility issue. At Dwight.
And they do have the numbers on that far left, if you use the numbers, that's helpful.
That's true. So, so yeah, item number 44 and 59, or 60, you're right.
So 44 is Dwight Elementary School. This was a principal request that during some of the fire drill or lockdown drills, some of the classrooms exit out into the courtyard, which is all grass. And she was asking if we could maybe do those in batuminous sidewalks, so if it's a muddy day, the kids aren't walking through all the grass and mud. So that is an ADA issue. That building has ADA issues, none that we have to comply with. The state requirement isn't telling us that all schools have to be ADA compliant, but you do have to report what percentage they are. So it got listed into a category of ADA compliance, but it really isn't a priority one at this time. compliance, but it really isn't a priority one at this time.
Okay.
The second one is the elevators at Woods. Actually, both elevators at Woods are giving us trouble. The Kone one ended up getting installed as a proprietary product. So we're having trouble getting circuit boards and parts for that with our current elevator contractor who's northeast and can't purchase Kone products. He has to go through someone else. And that elevator went down two years ago. It took us almost 11 weeks working with Kone to get it fixed and resolved. And during that time, the staff had to carry a couple of students up and down the stairs for that area. So that's why it's in the budget. But since then, it has been running very well, and we've been monitoring it and watching it. But the second elevator at Woods just went down about three weeks ago. And we are working with a company to try and repair it, but they're telling us that it's beyond repair, and it now needs to be replaced. So I just brought it to the superintendent's attention and the executive director of finance, and we're working through how we're going to do that. It's unexpected. But those are the elevators at Woods.
Ms. Asa?
Mr. Cohen, just to follow up on that, I remember having a discussion similar like this a few months ago. And I don't recall now, but I had asked you about a specific type of grant, and you were going to look into that. Did that ever happen?
For elevators, yeah, I had Sal Moore Beetle.
It was a grant through the, does anybody remember what that grant that I brought up? I can't remember off the top of my head what it was, but it was a special grant that the town can apply for. I'd have to go back in the minutes.
Yeah, I had Sal Moore Beetle look into that and call up the state. He's up there all the time with his larger projects. And he couldn't find anybody that was familiar with the grant related to an elevator, unless it's part of a building committee project. But generally, just grants for elevators, no. He couldn't find anything or dig anything up.
I'll see if I can pull up what it was. Okay.
Sure.
Is this the elevator that's on the waterfall?
The one that I just, the second one I applied, talked about? No.
No.
The first one is the Kone one.
And do we, didn't we just move it, though?
Yeah, we've been moving it out because northeast is working on it. The difficulty we had, where the circuit boards had to come out of Texas, and the brand of elevator they installed at Woods isn't one of their better brands, as you can imagine, so it wasn't stocked. And because Kone doesn't have our contract for all our elevators, we weren't getting a priority one status treatment. And very fought with them for a long time. But the one that's in the, that's the one that's in the waterfall. The second one is the Bradley Wing one that, the Jackson Wing one that is failing. It needs to go down to the lower level team room, a computer room and book room. That just went.
Mr. Peterson, sorry.
No, no, a lot of elevated questions. I want to move on to another thing I had asked about this in my questions. Item 19 on this list, the replace high school shot, put in discus throw field devices.
Yes.
You know, my sense about your, the answer that was provided is that there are safety issues. It's kind of the undercurrent of this answer. I guess, in what shape are these things really? And are they really, is this one area really going to cost nearly $22,000 to rebuild?
Yeah, it's unfortunate the cost is that high. But it's not only a safety issue, but the umpires that monitor those events are telling us that it's out of compliance, NCAA compliance, because of the pitch. It's sinking. So for them to stand there and throw the discus and do their spin when it's sinking six and a half inches, it's out of compliance, and they're getting fined, not fined for it, but the coaches are being notified. And it's been like this. It was installed in 2003. The company we had look at it said it really wasn't installed properly. It didn't have the right trap rock, sub base, high strength concrete for something like that. And he wouldn't expect that to even last 10 years, which it did not.
So, I mean, in what way is it unsafe? Is it that the pitch is odd and...
Yes, and cracking and...
Risk of tripping from the athletes and...
Right, for them to do their event properly.
I just, it just jumped out at me as a thing that is difficult to imagine how it could cost $22,000 to repair. All right, I'll leave that there.
Mrs. Gerber?
Just to follow up on that. So it's Roger Ludlow Middle School, but it's the field, the turf field at Ludlow High School?
No, it's in, it's located in Roger Ludlow Middle School, but it's for the high school athletics.
Right.
So there was no place to put it on the Ludlow High School site near the turf field. So they located it on Roger Ludlow Middle School and used it on the grass field, because the javelin has to stick into the ground.
Right. So it's back, like where the soccer field?
Yes.
Is, back there?
Yes, back of the school, right where the doors are to enter the building.
Got it.
If you go across that curb, you'll see it on the right side. There's a discus concrete
Right.
place. And then the fencing and netting isn't up because they take that down.
Well, right, because it's winter.
No vents, so it'll protect it.
All right, great. Thank you.
Yes.
Just a quick question, number 101, Roger Ludlow Middle School fire alarm replacement? Wondering why it's so far down the list?
Well, there's a fire alarm system in Roger Ludlow Middle School, but the system they put in is an old Edwards system at the time they built the building. It's not really compliant with the rest of the systems we have in the district. It kind of stands alone. They're having trouble getting parts, so at some point, we should replace it. That's why that's there. But it's not urgent. The system that's there now is working. The low voltage company we have, contractor we have, is maintaining it. But he always reminds us each year that it's the one standalone system that gives them trouble, and he's having a little bit of trouble getting parts.
But that, because of the cost, that would be capital non-recurring?
Yes, for that price, yes. And I believe it's listed so, right?
Yes, it is.
It is.
Yes, okay. We try to make sure those are clear.
Ms. Lieber?
Just a couple of quick ones. Number seven for the Ludlow parking lot, it says the Webster Wing project, because we did a very large replacement of this parking lot last year. Which, where is this wing?
Yes, we did the student parking lot last year, based on the fact that they need more space than that. We walked the site with the headmaster and the security guard there, and they were looking at the entrance off of Unqua on the side of Webster Wing. Right as you make that turn, there's a grass area on your right and a grass area on the left. And during the Ludlow High School window project, the contractor used those two areas as a laydown area for their supplies and campers and stuff. So he thought, couldn't we dig that out and put gravel and batuminus and make more parking?
Thanks. We're not doing that this year. I didn't mean to imply that. I was just curious, knowing we had done a large investment last year. Is that, I have a couple more. Is it about this? The painting for Riverfield. Riverfield is one of our newly renovated, I'm sorry, 54. Is that just a normal turnover for schools to need to be repainted? And again, this is not one that we're, I'm just curious about it, sorry.
We, if you look far over to the right in the notes, it says principal request or staff request. So if we get principals that call us and say, they've got a really bad stairwell, it's getting beat up, can we get it painted? We tend to try and put them in here. And then if we get full funding for the painting account, we try and get to seven or eight schools to try and please as many schools as possible. It's not quite enough to do every school a little bit, but...
I saw the principal's request and noticed that it was for classrooms, so thought it must be dire. And then I thought those should be relatively newly painted.
Some are.
Oh, not in every?
Not everything was.
All right, thank you. And then this, I'm hoping will just be a quick no, but just thought I should ask, since it's not being covered this year. 52 and 53 for North Stratfield and the exterior door replacements, those don't provide any safety concerns, do they?
No.
Okay. That's all.
Mr. Asa?
Mine's just a follow-up, getting back to you. I looked it up and found it was the, stand by, CDBG, Community Development Block Grant.
One more time.
Community Development Block Grant, which is a federal program, so that might be why Sal didn't find. But I do remember we talking, us talking about it. So it might be a long shot, but could be something to look into. So Community Development Block Grant Program.
Got it. And it's specific to elevators?
Through HUD. No, no, it's not. It's a, you can, you can go on their website and look. At first glance, it doesn't look like it's necessarily applicable, but you never know. I do know that this grant has funded some things that one wouldn't normally think would fall under when you just read the website.
Definitely. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Can I follow up on that?
Yes.
Having applied for a lot of CDBG grants in my life, ADA compliant elevators are an eligible activity. And while it's funded by the federal government, it is through the local town. And so an application would be to the town of Fairfield. And my experience is that the town has a lot of projects they like to fund through CDBG, so it's a very competitive process. So you really have to appeal through the town.
Thank you. Mrs. Max Cannelly?
First, unless I'm reading this wrong, there's a decent number of redundancies between the priority one and the priority two. And I was wondering if, if there's a reason for that, some of which actually did make it into our budget, but which were listed as priority two things. For example, the $5,000 new athletic department storage buildings are also listed as priority two, lines 69 and line 75.
That's because the two athletic directors asked for two buildings. We gave them one.
All right. Did they also ask for two softball fields?
No.
Two different schools?
No, but it's two high schools, two softball fields to be rebuilt.
I understand that, but I believe it's listed on both. That's what I'm trying to find where I wrote it again. So number 30, I see it listed as the...
Right, so...
Ward, and then...
63 and 71?
Thank you. So again, listed as priority one and two.
Yep. So what happened was, when the yellow ones became the budget, we moved the other ones, the one priorities, to two. And then preparing for the board request, we tried to move them back onto the first page and highlight which ones are in the budget, which ones aren't. So we might have missed a couple that already got moved.
Okay, well, if other town bodies, for any reason, asked to see this, I would just take a look at it.
The correct way is, the yellow ones would only be on the first page, which is the 470,030.
But I guess it all, and I know someone asked it as one of their budget questions, that idea of the previous year's priority two, do they become the priority? I mean, like, this could actually be an interesting...
That was a great question, too, because we do look at the twos and the threes, and occasionally, they do move up to the one status. It's a living document. We work on it practically every week. And some do normally move up to the one. And this year is the first year they did not move up. None of the twos or threes moved up.
From last year.
Right. These are all new items, which is very strange. For as long as I've been here, we do generally look at some, they get worse, we move them up to a higher priority. So it was a good question.
So, but I guess I'm just making the point, if it could be, if anyone asks me that, and not to make Mrs. Gerber a breakout in hives or anything, but line 109? I have to ask. I just saw the word window.
I saw that, too.
Did a window not get addressed?
May have. I'll have to check the specific one.
We need to check with Mr. McDonald on that one?
It's a hardware. They're having trouble getting this open. I think it snapped off. But I don't think it's a new window. It's not a new window.
Not every window at Ludlow was replaced. So this could be one of the ones that wasn't. I'm sure if it was a new one, it's just fine.
I had a couple of other questions on this agenda item, but I don't know if you want to defer, if anybody else has questions on this document.
Mr. Dwyer?
Me? First, thanks so much for putting this together. I found the one last year helpful, and this one very helpful as well. Especially like that this year, we got all the level ones, so, because last year, we didn't have that. So just a couple observations first. This whole entire thing is 5 million, roughly $5 million for every single project, right? Okay. Last year, we had, based on my counting them, 64 projects that were level two and level three. And this year, we have 77. So is it a fair assumption to say that our level twos and level threes are growing in number?
Yes, this year, because of the answer I gave Mrs. Max and Cannelly, we normally do move some of the two or threes up. It's the first year that I can remember in a long time that we did not, and they were all new number ones. We generally do, because it's a living document. If things get worse, a principal will call me, or maintenance will, and we go look at it and say, yeah, it's getting real bad now. We've got to move it up from a two or a three.
Okay. And then just getting to some, a couple of the specific items on here that didn't make the cut necessarily. Both, I see, both high schools are requesting the softball fields. What's the issue with both of them?
Actually, the two athletic directors didn't bring this up. This was our grounds contractor for the town and the school system. In their biweekly meetings, we talk about all the fields in town. And I guess the town side is looking at rebuilding the softball infields with the new Par-Tac clay, and said that we should consider it, too. So we put it in the budget, but as the superintendent and I looked at everything, and we talked with the athletic directors, we labeled it a number two, and it could wait.
Okay, okay. Just wanted to know what the issue was there. Line number 57, Fairfield Woods Middle School cafeteria expansion joint project, what is, what is that? I know it's a very full school. Is it, is it cafeteria just crowded, or what is that project?
Expansion joint is a controlled joint that's deliberately cut into the floor with a rubber membrane so that the two different floors or two different additions, years can move, expand and contract without cracking the floor. Generally, a lot of contractors, including the building committee, larger jobs, value engineer out those contracted joints, those expansion joints, because they are expensive. And they did it at Woods Middle School. So there was no expansion joint put in the cafeteria when the new addition was put on, and it's cracking. It's about 50 feet long. It's not real bad now. It's not real open. You can't get your heel caught in it. No one's tripping on it, but we did notice it.
Is the repair to that floor, in your professional opinion, greater than the 12,500 possibly, than the joint would have been?
No, that is, oh, I don't know. I don't know, but I'll tell you, I'll tell you that the auditorium lobby, they didn't put an expansion joint in, and we did have to repair that one. And that was expensive because there's a flagstone material in there that was very hard to get. But it is generally, in my 40 years working in the business, it is one of the top items that's value engineered out.
Okay. 82, system-wide, the card access, it's a security item. And I know we had talked about card access being an important security issue and moving away from keys and that kind of a thing. So where are we at with that?
We've spoken with the police about this. We haven't moved that far into the security aspect of every single door being card access. I've only seen it in the hospitals. I've worked in three hospitals in Connecticut. They do, every single door is card access.
I just remember it being, you know, a pretty big item.
The school buildings have not. And it's because of our program, you know, years ago, the custodian showed up at 6:00 a.m. He opened every single door. Some of the elementary schools have 20 doors all wide open, and anyone could come and go the way they want. Now that program has changed, and it's only the front door. You're allowed to come in and out of, and after the school is open, everything's locked down, and you have to use intercom to get in.
Yeah, I was going to say, from a school perspective, we would not want all of our doors automated like that, where everybody's badge was getting them in and out of every door in the building. It would be going backwards from a safety standpoint.
So what is that project, then?
Those are probably, go ahead.
It was a future project we talked about with the police, and we held it in here. Probably could even move to a number three in the recent conversations I've had with the police department.
All right, so that's fine. That's all I need to know. And then the last thing I wanted to ask about was... wanted to ask about was the Emergency Generator Replacement Project, number 70 at Fairfield Ludlow High School. That's a two. Is, is the current, I assume we currently have an emergency generator at Fairfield Ludlow High School, but is it close to being on the...
We're having a lot of problems with it.
Okay, so it's...
We're having a lot of problems with it, but it's hard for me to bring it into the long-range plan, when we're supposed to get 18 to 20 years out of a generator, and this one's 12 years old. So, there's a lot of issues.
Is there a warranty?
It was installed with a single-wall oil tank under it. So anything penetrates that by accident, we have a hazardous leak. We've had trouble with the batteries, the circuit boards, the radiator. So everything's, it's 15,000, 17,000, 21,000, and we're making repairs to it to keep it running. But because it's an emergency shelter location, it's certainly more important than, you know, the generator up at Burr, that, you know, when we lose the power, all the windows, it's so bright out. It's not as critical. But we're working with the company. We've called them in twice now. We generally like the company we're working with, FM Generator, but we're having some issues with the Ludlow High School one, that we're going to have to address at some point.
So do you first see that becoming Level One pretty soon?
It was for a while, and I was going to put it in the long-range plan further up. But then, when I met with a professional of FM Generator and our engineer, and they told me, it's about 12 and a half years old, these last up to 20 years, I'm thinking, I don't want to go into the town bodies to replace a generator that...
But we're spending a lot of money on repairs, fixing it?
Not, I wouldn't say a lot, like, you know, $100,000, but we've probably spent close to 60,000, 70,000 in the past five years. And it just seems to keep coming up. They're inspecting five schools with generators, and Ludlow High Schools keeps coming up.
Okay. All right.
So we know it's an issue, but good question.
Yeah. Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Dwyer?
One comment, one question. I think Mr. Ace's comment about looking for other funding sources, actually, the CDBG grant might be a funding source for the generator, because it serves an educational purpose. But because the town depends on Ludlow as an emergency shelter, they might find it an attractive target that actually helps them as well. So you may want to explore that.
Thank you.
My, my question is actually concerning the Stratfield Roof Replacement. Earlier in the meeting, there was a suggestion that perhaps this will be moved into the operating budget by reducing the amount of money available for the Walter Fitzgerald. And I was wondering if that is a staff proposal or a staff discussion, and where are we going with that question? From the, to the, through the chair, to whoever?
That was my recommendation, and I answered the question that way.
It's question 96.
Thinking of where that could come out of, our intention with the Walter Fitzgerald campus was, we're holding 110,000 for the lease renewal, which would be normal if we were proceeding with another year or two, or another three-year contract. It was 100,000 last year. We figured it to be 110. Then we also put in the Walter Fitzgerald Campus Project. We're hoping, and it's still our intention, that the owner of the building will provide us with the renovations and additions we asked for, related to the inside and the outside of the building, and make it part of a new contract that could be 10 or 20 years. If that happens, we could see the 200,000 not being needed, or we could do the Stratfield Elementary School roof, a part of a roof for that replacement. If the owner falls through on the Walter Fitzgerald Campus Project, it would still leave us 115,000 there that we, I talked to the superintendent and said, some of the major needs, or Priority One needs there, would be the upgrade of the electrical system and panels for the building. So if we want to add air conditioning in a specific room, we could. I thought painting would go a long way, to paint the whole inside. And just recently, some of the plumbing in the ground under the bathrooms is crumbling and falling apart. We could replace some of the piping and maybe fix those toilets for that 115. It should be okay. And I thought the principal would like those suggestions.
And I was just asking, the next time we see this list, will that be on the list, or will it be what?
I think that's what we're asking for input tonight, so that when we get ready to come to you Thursday, we've made any of those adjustments.
I would support that change, but that's just me.
Ms. Pickow was next.
Item number 40, the Burr Courtyard Atrium Landscape Changes Project. Is that because that's where the water was coming in every time it rained?
That's part of it. We didn't, the last time we had a heavy rain, the 6.81 inches that one day, the water flowed down the corridor of Burr. But the courtyards themselves, as beautiful as they are, have given us some difficulty maintenance-wise. The first problem we ran into when the building opened is, there were blueberry plants in the courtyards that collected millions of worms, that got under the doors and crawled around in the corridors. The trees are getting very large in there. We've talked with the tree warden about how we're going to deal with these trees that are getting really big now in these courtyards. The bees tend to like these courtyards. They're growing nests on all the courtyard walls and windows. And yes, we have some leakage coming under the double doors, if it's a certain type of rain that's blowing sideways. So it's a combination of issues, and we would prefer to see them gravelled nicely with a interior design for a courtyard, or some other means or methods that'd be easier to maintain.
Ms. Lieber, I'm sorry. I was thinking about those blueberries and the worms.
Was it the blueberry plant?
It was the blueberries and the worms. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, but when they called me up there to see it, it was unbelievable.
I have a couple, like Walter Fitzgerald, questions that tie in with facilities in this. But I also was wondering if you could just confirm, we don't have any out-of-district students coming this year. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And, and could you refresh my memory on what the revised tuition was for, was it 35, 35,000? And did we have any, I don't know if this is something you could say, any outside families looking? And had the facilities been more attractive, maybe they would have decided to enroll?
We did have a family visit, a potential student from a different district. I, I don't think the St. Emory's building was...
Helpful.
Was the factor in why the student did not eventually come.
Because I was wondering if our facilities were more attractive for Walter Fitzgerald, besides being academically appropriate and necessary for our students, if it would be easier to market to outside, out-of-district students, and then we could potentially recoup our, our facility's investment?
Absolutely. And I will say, the staff at Walter Fitzgerald does an excellent job showing that building.
Yes.
But certainly, it is, it's in need of some repair.
Yes. Yes. I didn't want it to, I don't want it to come across as that. It's not very well maintained, and they do their best, for sure. But they do such great work there. I think that if we could help invest in it, that would benefit the...
Thank you.
Mrs. Max Caneli?
Back to Mr. Dwyer's question, when I put in that number 96, because given everything, all of the stories in Fairfield County about what's happening with water damage, I do think that Stratfield Roof Replacement, you know, deemed a Number One priority, is important. The only part of me that's very uncomfortable targeting the Walter Fitzgerald money, because obviously, it's a big number out there, easy to target, is, we did all visit that campus. I don't think any of us questioned at all its needs. And so there's, there is that part of me that hesitates about pulling a full 85,000. Now, obviously, the, the big X-factor here is, is these negotiations, which we don't know, and nor will we know by the time we have to vote on Thursday. So that's an X-factor moving forward. So I think it's important that the Stratfield Roof does get added as, as an operating budget item. I'm only, and I obviously defer to Mr. Collins, if he really thinks that that pulling the full 85 from that Walter Fitzgerald line item, if that's appropriate, it just makes me very nervous. I want, if we're, if we are staying there, I'd like to see that building really well addressed. Again, I, the staff did a wonderful job in its appearances, but we were able to see more, and I just don't want to neglect it. So I, I guess, I'm happy to defer to Mr. Peterson. I'm just throwing out there the notion of, is this something that maybe, since I know I, you didn't get this question until yesterday, therefore, this morning, if that's something that maybe, in the next day or two, could be reexamined if there's something from another line. But I support the idea of the 85 for Stratfield.
And, and the only thing that I wanted to add to that is that, is that in this list, there's something like $400,000 of other potential work for Walter Fitzgerald that could be done, from carpets to walkway repair. So it's, it's just in terms of taking money away from things that are necessary, there's plenty of other projects to do at that facility.
Yeah, and there's things we wouldn't want to fund. I wouldn't recommend we fund. I certainly wouldn't recommend we rip up all the vinyl asbestos tile and deal with the carpet, and then improve the building for them. That's an owner's item. So there were certain things like that I looked at the list. Certainly, I wouldn't want to take on the roof, the windows, the building envelope. Those are all pretty large items, and those are general maintenance-type items that an owner would take care of. So I was looking more at cosmetic, what was real important to us. Certainly, they, the staff stressed to me that they wanted to air-condition a couple more rooms. And I thought, fresh coat of paint goes a long way throughout a whole building. And then certainly fixing bathrooms. People want bathrooms to work.
Not asking too much. All right, so again, I'll just ask maybe if, if some consideration can be given to, if there's some other place it can be pulled from. But, and I'll defer to Mr. Ace on a follow-up, and then I have one more question.
Okay, Mr. Ace, follow up.
Yeah, just a quick question. On the Stratfield Roof, to confirm, what, what if we didn't do it?
Good question, because it's, we've gotten a good life out of this roof. It expired, the warranty expired in 2013. So with a good PM program, we've been watching it. We had one leak a couple of years ago that was on an expansion joint near the equipment that was repaired. And then we recently had some real problems in the principal's office in the lobby, but it turned out to be building envelope-related. A caulking had to be replaced, a piece of flashing, and all that got done. And I got a very nice message from the principal thanking me after the last few rainstorms. So right now, there is not a leak coming through. But contractors that are monitoring this roof for us tell us, they go fast when they go. So it's already bubbling, as you can see from the photographs, and, you know, we could wait a little while, but when it starts to go, it's going to go fast.
Yeah.
And it also needs a building committee. We want to seek reimbursement for this, if we can, and get money back from the state. So it'll take time to do that.
Okay. So if we put it in our operating budget, we have a building committee, we get state reimbursement. Where does the state reimbursement go? It goes to the town side, right? It doesn't come back to us.
Yeah, yes.
So would we not, so I guess my question is, if we put it off one year, and looking, and I was at the Board of Selectmen presentation that you gave, and looking at the pictures, they did have a couple of good questions regarding the, the increase in size of the unit and whatnot. And looking at the pictures, it doesn't really look like there's a lot of room there. That being said, I feel it's conceivable, and I was maybe a little, think that maybe we were a little under on a contingency on there. I can conceivably see this project being over $100,000 quite easily in one year with escalation, and a, and a little bit more of a contingency for those things and the footprint and whatnot. If that's the case, do you think that we could get a year out? I mean, obviously, you don't have a crystal ball. But what do you think the likelihood of failure is if we put it off for one year to go capital non-recurring and bond it, since the money from reimbursement's going to the town, and it's not going to offset what we're taking out of the Walter Fitzgerald to cover this?
That's a good question. The worst roof we had to deal with was Ward High School. That roof was failing. We had garbage cans in the corridors collecting water. That was going fast, and it was a very tough project because of how big it was, and we couldn't find a contractor to do all four phases in one summer. So I think the Stratfield Roof is nowhere near that.
So...
It's small enough that we can keep repairing if we have to. If the whole thing were to go, we'd have to relook at it. That'd be a chance we'd take.
I, I would throw it out there to the board that we should consider that, since, based on the timeline where we're at now, realistically, this project wouldn't get done this summer, but it would probably be next summer, correct?
It would be tough. It'd be hard to get it. We'd have to wait for approval. We need drawings and documents.
So if we were to...
Up for bidding.
Is there a way we could do some of that preliminarily and put it in the bond next year? So if we did it properly, we could start it maybe one or two months after what we'd realistically be doing it now?
We generally do that with certain projects, but we have maxed out our technical consulting line item. And I haven't told Dreen yet, but I need a little bit more money in that account next week.
Okay.
So this is a good time to tell her.
Last, last question then on the roof, and, and I think this is good for the board to hear. If we were to put this off and try and bond it next year with our non-recurring projects, what do you think the difference in start date time would be if we put it in our operating budget versus waited for non-recurring next year? What would the delay be? Like, what would the difference in start dates be?
Certainly, the non-recurring's approved in March usually. So that's well before June 30th to get any project ready for the summer, bidding and ready, versus the operating budget, which is approved in May, late May. We're not able to write a purchase order till June. So we're really not getting started on a, a roof project or a large project for the summer, unless we plan ahead and spend some of our technical consulting money, which I have done for two of the eight non-recurring projects. They're already drawn up, designed, ready to go, that were real important. So I would say the non-recurring portion, we probably could look at that roof again, have our consultant look at it and contractor, and see if the contingency needs to increase, or if there's flashing around it that wasn't figured, and...
And I don't want to, I don't want to test your, your judgment or the experts on that. I just, I do think I give credit, the Board of Selectmen, the, a couple of them did ask some good questions. When I heard them and looked at the pictures, all I saw were dollar signs. So that being said, I guess, but the root of my question is, if we put it in the operating budget, what would the projected start date be? If we put it off and we did non-recurring next year, what would the start date be?
It would depend on if the design drawings and documents were ready to go.
Best-case scenario.
Or not, then we wouldn't be able to get it done in the summer with the operating budget. If the design documents were ready, could go out to bid, and we could just be waiting to approve it and write a purchase order to the contractor.
So best-case scenario, operating budget, non-recurring start dates.
Okay.
And I, I'm not holding you to it. I just, I'm trying to get a timeframe, because if it's not that big of a difference, I'm kind of leaning towards putting this to the non-recurring, if we're not going to, by putting it in the operating budget, we're not starting it for a year anyways.
Right. So if it goes in the operating, it's not going to happen this summer if it's in the operating budget.
That's probably highly likely. It won't get done.
It's going to be, it's going to be next summer. And if we go through non-recurring, it most likely is going to be next summer.
Correct. And I'm also thinking it has a large piece of equipment on it, HVC, that has to be removed to do a new pitch pocket. So the chances of that getting done this summer, starting in June, is going to be unlikely.
Would you feel comfortable if this board decided to try and put this in the non-recurring next year, as opposed to in the operating budget this year?
Yes.
I would move that, I suggest to the board, when we discuss this, that we do that.
And if I...
Ms. Max Caneli and then Mr. Dwyer.
Okay, so I have a follow-up, and I still have my last question to ask. And I have no idea where this is going, but you reference the, the technical consultants. Would we then, what if, does that need any slight bump for this operating budget, so that it would be ready to go if it got approved through the capital non-recurring?
No. The general technical consulting line item is running around 100,000, our request. And that's to cover a couple of small projects that we want to move forward with. It covers indoor air quality, engineers and consultants, and things that happen on a regular basis. So we have some funding for a roof this size. This is fairly small.
But we weren't planning on that line being spent on Stratfield?
Correct. But we don't, I don't have the 100,000 in technical consulting itemized how much I'm going to spend for every item. Some of that is money that's unexpected, things that pop up.
Okay.
Like consultants for indoor air quality, mold testing, vinyl asbestos testing, those kinds of things. kinds of things pop up, and we need to hire consultants to come in and do that work.
Okay, so, I'll put it as explicitly as Mr. Peterson just said. So, I'm asking, do we need another $10,000 in that line to be sure that your normal expected, a little bit of contingency is still covered, and the Stratfield project is addressed, so that it's a little bit ahead of the game for the capital non-recurring schedule, so that it can be addressed?
I don't think it's necessary.
Okay.
With the money we have there.
Mr. Dwyer, follow-up on that?
Before you ask your new question, can I follow-up on this?
Sure.
So, then I would think that the staff should come to us on Thursday with two ideas. One is, the board should understand that even if we say, let's budget it and spend the extra consulting money so that we're ready for this summer, if the budget gets cut anyways, there's no guarantee that this particular project is going to stay in the budget and we will have spent consulting fees, because we won't know that till May. And then the second question I would think the staff should come to us on Thursday with is that now that Mr. Cullen has talked himself into only budgeting $115,000 for Walter Fitzgerald, would he keep the original $200,000, or would he pull some projects off the second priority list that added up to the $85,000? I don't need an answer now, but I think that's a thought process that the staff should be ready to talk to us about on Thursday.
I'd be happy to answer it, but it's up to you.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'd answer that I'd go back and keep it at $200,000, because it's still unknown what the owner's going to do.
And that really is a process we've gone through in order to create this level and this depth, is a lot of discussion about every single project.
Thank you. I had my last question. Was your follow-up on this?
I'll go after Ms. Maxine Canelli.
Mrs. Maxine Canelli?
Yeah, and I just hope that we, as a board especially, make the case that we, I mean, I know we say it every year, but we need a little bit of wiggle room, you know, on something like that. We can't in fact definitively nail down every single cost, every single project and line item. And, you know, if, if we end up going forward with this lease and keeping Walter Fitzgerald, I just, that $200,000 definitely is a huge need, and any town official who needed a visit, I mean, I'm sure we make that offer, that I hope they get the chance to see it so that they understand, and preferably when it's 90 degrees. But my last question was about on, from, the question someone submitted, number 48, regarding Tomlinson. This is not a huge budget item, but I guess because the Tomlinson water line went up 170% or something like that, do we make a, obviously, when we talk about water, it's not because of a new artificial turf field, because we're not watering the field. To degrade, but is, is that all this is? Is that for its use? Because it sounds like we're...
That's our opinion. Our opinion, monitoring the water bill at Tomlinson and all our schools, first of all, we are seeing an increase in water usage at 14 of the 17 schools. We're trying to figure out why. Some of it's very small, some of it's larger. But specifically at Tomlinson, I know we've had requests from Park and Rec and the athletic departments that one of the issues with that field is there is no place to get water for drinking, hosing anything down, a piece of equipment. It's just, it wasn't planned in. So, we've provided a hose bib and hoses to help them with that. So, that's the only thing I can think of that could be the reason for a water increase at Tomlinson as we're monitoring it, because that request came in from several groups and Park and Rec.
Specifically for that field?
Specifically for water, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Asa?
Just quickly, back to Walter Fitzgerald. You mentioned crumbling sewer pipes, bathroom waste lines. Is that not something that, I understand we negotiate with a landlord and as a tenant, depending on the structure of the lease, we're responsible for certain things. But would that fall under a health and safety concern, that the health department would require a landlord to provide working sewer lines?
That's exactly the direction I'm going to go if we don't get a response from the owner.
Okay, because...
We've notified the owner. Generally, the way it works, even in this building, is our maintenance team looks at the problem first, to see if it's, you know, within the space. If it goes beyond the walls, the floor slabs, the ceilings, then we call the owner.
Okay. Yeah, I would just be very concerned if we started putting money into waste lines underground in a facility, in a thing that they, a landlord would have to provide that to anybody, just, just like working heat and such, you know, in a home, you know?
I agree.
Thank you.
I agree.
Any other questions for Mr. Cullen? All right. Thank you, Mr. Cullen. We're going to move on to transportation, pages 34 to 35. Is that him? I was unsure, just holding your pen. Ms. Maxine Canelli?
I just wanted to follow up on someone's question 59, and saying that the ECC Transportation, you know, is not coming with an added cost now that we know that our second site. I had just wanted to confirm that, I think, a number of board members mentioned that idea of not going by a strict feeder pattern for feeding those two sites, and so I just wanted to follow up on that. Is that, does that, is that going to be what ends up happening, or?
The, well, what we're intending is the feeder pattern that was presented to the board, which is a mixed feeder pattern, is what, how that would occur.
Well, what had initially been told to us is that students who eventually would be, yeah, that...
You're supposed to say, "Never mind."
Body language works too.
Never mind. More, any more questions, Ms. Maxine Canelli, on transportation? Anybody else, transportation?
Yeah. Question number 31, there was an answer that they were looking for more information. It says, "The etiology I asked about for the significant increase in special education summer school transportation," even, and then it says that we are in the process of collecting this information. And specifically, I had asked, right, you know, what was the need that you were looking at, and in terms of the numbers, and just a little bit more background on that.
Early childhood, I mean, we're talking about summer school, correct?
Yeah, yeah. Particularly, special education transportation.
Special education summer.
So, our extended school year programming.
There's actually, there's actually an increase for extended school year, as we're gathering a legal opinion on how we actually handle transportation in the summer, from a federal law perspective. And that has to do with our extended school year students and how we do or do not provide transportation. So, we have included a bump in there in order to make sure that we can accommodate for that. We're expecting us to have to transport a few more students than we would have traditionally.
That's correct.
So, it's a legal matter.
Yeah, in order to provide students an appropriate education, if extended school year programming is required through the PPT process, we're anticipating an increase in the amount of students with disabilities who access special education, transportation during extended school year programming.
And we have traditionally, and I clarify that, we've traditionally ran buses for children who have, like the small bus, unique transport. But the reality is, for public education, we're supposed to provide transport if you're required to be at school, for all children. That's why we run all of our big buses, 120 buses. Traditionally, in the summer, we have not done that. We've only done that for one population of students who had the unique bus. We have not ran transportation in the summer for all children that need to be at summer school and actually have extended school year in their IEPs.
Thank you.
Any additional questions on transportation? Seeing none, moving on to dues and fees, page 44 to 45. Thank you, Mr. Mancusi. Anybody? Okay, seeing none. Discussion of Superintendent's Recommended 2019-2020 Budget Request and Changes Suggested by Members. At our last meeting, I indicated if anybody, I'm with Mr. Dwyer's guidance, if anybody has any changes that they're thinking about, I would ask you now to share, and to make it easier for staff, if you have any, we'll keep a list of proposed additions and subtractions. Or if you just want to share, like, what you're thinking as a, as an entry point to this discussion, we can kind of keep a running list, because you might be suggesting one thing of adding something, and she might want to delete what you want to add. So, if anybody has some initial thoughts, Mr. Peterson?
At the risk of starting that conversation again, I, I think that the boom request for $45,000 should be, should be removed. I don't know that I heard there was a compelling case for buying one. I was, I was not convinced by that. I don't know if any further work has been done in terms of looking into leasing possibilities.
Look at what you did.
He's coming back.
Could I ask this question? Are we asking people to say, "Here's what I'm thinking"? Can the staff put the exact numbers together so that we have specifics on Thursday? Or are we having discussion and debate on each suggestion?
We're not going to have, given the time, I don't think we're going to have debate on each, if the body's okay with that. Just to give some initial thought, we're not going to sit and talk about whether or not we need the boom right now, just to kind of get an idea of what people are thinking. If staff needs to go back and do any other work and any other estimates, they can go back with that information on Thursday.
And we actually are going to try to get that to you by the close of the lease tomorrow, just so the board has that information.
Can we let Mr. Cullen just say something?
Okay, okay, you came up here so quickly, but I, yes, Mr. Cullen, please.
I have to have...
Make your case, make your case.
No, you made me think of the lease question, and my maintenance staff did call me today. They've called four companies, two we generally work with, Sunbelt and United Rentals, and both don't lease equipment that way. They rent or buy. And the other two said the same thing. So, they're doing some more research on it, but we haven't found a company that will do a one-man lift lease. So, that's all I wanted to add.
Okay, I appreciate you checking into that. I still, again, from the presentation, I don't know personally that I was convinced that's an absolute necessity. I will say, before we move on, I've been up and down in terms of going back to the, to the Math Academy, whether that was kind of worth the $7,000 in development. I'm, I'm leaning toward that as a, as a possible area of interest rather than being removed, but it's, I'm still, I'm still up and down about it, but I'm more on the pro side at this point.
Anybody else? Ms. Pico?
I just want to reiterate what I asked you before the meeting started about, how much time do you need before I make my suggestions? Because we got a whole packet of questions at 6:30 that I didn't have a chance to read through before the meeting.
As soon as possible.
Okay.
Mr. Asa?
I would like for an $18,000 reduction in revenue for open choice to be looked at, and how that would be handled.
Ms. Jacobson?
Sorry, Nick, were you done? Is that okay? If we have follow-up questions from either one of the other two nights really quickly that we could send tomorrow morning in order to make decisions on certain things, is that okay? In other words, I don't want to, you know, I know it's quick turnaround time, and they're very quick questions, but in order for me to tell you what my numbers would be, what I'm thinking about doing...
Can you share what you're possibly thinking of?
Program assessment is one area I'm looking to reduce possibly, but I need some follow-up information, because I want to make a mindful reduction, so not just something arbitrary. And I'm kind of thinking Chromebook cases might be an area, but I don't, you know, I feel like that's $40,000 almost, maybe that, you know, we cover our books at school, and maybe we should just cover our cases at home too. But I'm not sure about that, but it's just one of the things I was thinking about.
I'm, any other suggestions? I wanted to come back to where we started in terms of the, the cost for the superintendent's search.
Wow.
And, you know, where, taking it out of the $100,000 that's currently in the budget for the consultant to look at district-wide HVAC needs. Want to hear the board's thoughts, if you are okay keeping it at that line item. If so, we'll plan on that. If you're not really sure, now would be a good time to share that. Mr. Dwyer?
At the last time, we had the announcement after the budget was done. And both salary and benefits of the replacement, the interim, came in less than what the current superintendent was earning. And so, while it costs us $79,000, I think one piece of information we may want for Thursday is how much of that $79,000 cost, because some of it occurred in a future budget year relative to relocation. But how much of the actual cost of the consultant in bringing candidates in and whatnot was actually covered by the superintendent line, and therefore, it was net-net, no impact on other line items. I don't know the answer to that question, but, but we may want to look at whether that's where some of the money can actually come from.
Thank you. Ms. Mansal's taking notes. Ms. Jacobson?
Well, from my recollection from our questions on the HVAC consultant, was that in order to get schematic drawings and all of the materials that we're trying to get for each school, since each school is so different, that that's the amount that would be needed for us to get an actual estimate to put AC in all the schools? So, I'm not sure if that thinking has changed, or are you wanting maybe possibly get less from that person than what we were thinking about? Because I think it's important for us to really have a good number on what that would be.
I absolutely agree with that, and I think that if we reduce that item, it would, well, Mr. Cullen, I would ask you to come up and just, in terms of sending this out, putting an RFQ out, could you break it up? Could you do, you know, I know there was some talk about doing two, the high schools as one scope, and then go back and do the rest of the schools? Why not?
When you finished your discussion, I was going to ask if I could chime in, if it was okay if I bid the project for the 10 schools to at least find out what the cost is going to be for each school, because we're going to ask for each school. Then we can decide if we're going to do one or two or none. So, I would recommend we move that direction.
Personally, I'd like to know for each school. I mean, that's just my feeling on it.
So, you're saying leave it as $100,000?
Whatever.
Well, we don't have to spend that.
Yeah, whatever.
We can bid it, the documents are ready to go, and we can bid it so that they come back and tell us how much they want to investigate each of the 10 schools, what the cost will be, and then we have to pick if we're going to do all the schools or only one or two, and...
When you say do all the schools, you mean get the estimate to put it in. You don't mean do the schools.
Correct.
Right.
So, we wouldn't necessarily, we could send it out to bid, but there would only be, once the bid comes back, there would only be a certain amount of money. So, the $100,000 is really for them to do the full scope. We can send it out, it might come back, and it's going to be after Thursday, we're going to get that information after Thursday. So, we still kind of have to decide about how much, we need to make that decision, I think, now.
Like, whether or not you want an estimate for every school or not?
No, I think that we can decide, we can get the estimate, because that doesn't cost us anything to send it out and for them to come back with the estimate. The $100,000 was an estimate for them, thinking of what it was going to cost this company to do each school. We can put it out to bid, they could come back, and they could say, "Your estimate was dead-on," or not.
Well, is it a good estimate?
Well, it could be a good estimate, well, that's, this is an estimate of what, we're going to put it out to bid, they're going to come back, they're going to tell us it's going to cost $100,000 to look at the district, the full district.
And it's going to cost more for the high school than it is for Dwight.
Is $100,000 enough? Or you think it's too low?
No, it, what I didn't want you to do is tie my hands and say, "Just bid the two high schools," because then if the two high schools come back and they're more than $10,000 each, I'd rather bid all 10 schools that need their design, and then we can decide... rather bid all 10 schools that need their design, and then we can decide as a group which ones we're going to move forward with, if it's one, two, all 10.
Can you get the 10 estimates for $100,000?
That's what the purchasing director and I worked on. We looked at past engineering studies, we're looking at firms that already have the school drawings and information, and he said five to 10,000 per school should be what we budget. So we went with the high number of 10,000 each.
Mrs. Max and Cannelly.
Just to clarify, these are two completely different estimates we're talking about getting. One is free, and one is the one that's costing us $100,000. It just, we keep using words like bids and estimates interchangeably. So the idea is, for free, we ask people how much will it cost building by building? For them to be the one...
No, we're asking, we're putting a bid out for a company to come in, and correct me if I'm wrong, to come in, and then this company is going to, it's going to cost possibly $100,000 for them to do that work, get the schematics, and tell us what we need for each school.
No, no. It's two separate estimates. We're saying, Company A, B, and C, what will you charge to look at our 10 schools? That's free. To ask Company A, B, and C, what will you charge to get...
Yes, yes, yes. Okay, yes.
I know, yes. So, but I'm just saying, we keep using these words, estimates and bids, for two different aspects of this project. And I'm just trying to clarify, we want the information from multiple companies of what will they charge to give us the information of what that project would cost to go forward. We want that regardless of this budget line item. Then, when a company comes in and says, I can do it this way, then we decide how we want to, will $100,000 cover an investigation of all 10 schools or not? But it's, we keep conflating the two steps, and I think that's going to be very confusing as we bring this to other town bodies. So, and regardless, I'm in favor of Mr. Dwyer's point, which is, keep the $100,000. I want all of the information for all the schools. I don't want to start picking and choosing the, an elementary school over a high school or over a middle school. I want the information. I would like to hold the line on the $100,000 in the hope that we can then get all that information and find the money from that salary line to cover the cost of the search firm.
Ms. Asa.
I understand what Mr. Dwyer is saying with the salary savings interim versus actual super. However, based on our timing now, it is potentially feasible, depending on when we got started here, that we would not need an interim, or we would need an interim for a very short period of time. And if that is the case, then I don't know if we would realize the savings that we saw the last time based on the length that we had an interim. Mr. Dwyer, does that, am I on the right track there? With a hypothetical timeline pie in the sky?
You're on the right track, and it depends on whether you are an optimist or a pessimist, whether you think these costs are actually going to be incurred after July 1. Because the idea of, quote, getting our act together, finding a search firm, determining the profile, and putting it out on the street, and hiring somebody by July 1 is a very aggressive schedule. And so you could equally say, there's just as good a chance that these costs are going to be incurred after July 1 as before July 1. But I think Ms. Asa is correct. You could choose the other gamble, if you will, and say, no, we're going to incur these costs this year, and therefore next year's budget has no aspect to this discussion, because we're, Mrs. Monsel is going to have to find the money somehow if we spend it in this fiscal year.
So I guess I would follow up in saying, two conversations here. As Mrs. Max and Cannelly said, the RFP doesn't cost us anything. So we're going to get an RFP, we're going to have companies that come in and give us a bid on what they want to charge for each school to investigate and give us an estimate on what it will cost. I fully support that idea. If we were to take $80,000 out of that line, it would leave us 20. When we get our RFP back, we have 10 line items, we would use our 20 to choose which schools at that point we can afford. On the flip side, let's say hypothetically, this board is saying, they want to spend that $100,000, you know, come you-know-what or high water. So then I think we, I do think we need to put this $80,000 in here, which means we'll have to find it from somewhere else. So if we're putting the roof off to non-recurring, can it come from Walter Fitzgerald? Sorry to keep doing that to you, Mr. Cullen, but I think as a board, we're going to have to make a decision where this money comes from if we're putting it in. And I think we have a couple little areas we're talking about, and it's, we don't really have a vast majority of other places to pull from that I can see.
Ms.
Go ahead, Noah Chaska.
Well, I guess, you know, as part of this, and we haven't had the discussion yet, so I realize it's difficult for us to say definitively, but Mr. Dwyer brought up the point that if we are in a hurry to do a search and get things going, it has to come out of this budget.
This year's.
This year's budget, 18, 19.
Right. Portion of it, yes, you're right.
Well, the majority of it, perhaps. I mean...
Well, probably all of it except for the relocation.
Right, all of it except for relocation. If in fact, we are being optimistic, and we hope that we will get someone as close to July 1st as possible, everything from the consultants is coming out of this current budget. So the discussions about taking it out of the $100,000 are moot. Because if we are in earnest about starting a search as quickly as we can, that's now. That's this year's budget. So all of this conversation right now doesn't mean anything, because that's the 19, 20 budget. So just wanted to put that out there. And it is 10, 50, too. And that was my comment, too.
And if I could, future candidates will tune into this channel and see what the board talked about. So I would hesitate to start throwing numbers around, around relocation, or this, that, or the other thing. I think Mrs. Gerber makes a valid point, but I wanted to just caution that you don't take the next step and say, well, how much is this and how much is that? Because I think that's part of the negotiation discussion that the board has to have in private.
Yep.
It's 10 to 11.
Do you need a motion to extend a special meeting?
I do.
I would like to make a motion to extend this meeting past 11:00 PM.
With no end, just until we're done.
Until we're done, believe it or not.
Do I have a second? Mr. Peterson.
Wow.
All in favor? Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Vitale, Mr. Asa, Ms. Jacobson, Mr. Peterson.
If you adjust it to say 11:30, I'll add the sixth vote that is needed.
How about 11:45?
Agreed.
Okay.
Motion, do we have it?
That was a unanimous consent adjustment to a motion.
Okay.
So it's 6:30?
Yeah.
Okay. Hopefully nothing.
Yeah, hopefully nothing. All right, so, just one comment that I'm not in favor of reducing the $100,000. I feel like that was the original discussion about getting a sense of the body on that item, and I just want to throw it out there.
That's fine. Thank you for that.
But can I ask that, I assume Mrs. Monsel will tell us in some way how much of what we spent the last time actually came out of the salary benefit line item? And that might, you might want to do that in a note to the board that is part of the superintendent's search process rather than a public document.
Ms. Jacobson.
So if we're thinking that, I don't know how you're going to proceed with the conversation. Do you want us to wait to give us our thoughts about this year's budget for the search item? Or what, how do you...
We'll wait till Thursday for any adjustments coming out of this year's budget.
There is no adjustment for this year's budget.
I mean, not adjustment, any discussion. We'll wait till Thursday to discuss as part of the quarterly report, if we think that there's any, you know, if we have to find money in this year's budget to hire a search firm.
So you want us to come up with ideas on that?
No, I do not want you to, I want to ask the staff to look at this year's budget and come up with a recommendation, just as they did for next year's budget.
Got it. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions on this? Mr. Asa, or comments? All right, so right now, we're going to...
I'm just wondering, Mrs. Gerber made a very good point, that I honestly didn't think about. And hiring the search firm and everything this year, I mean, sooner than later, would mean that we would have to find the money in the 18, 19 budget. So if we did that, there would probably still be some budget implications for 19, 20, carrying out if a super wasn't hired beyond that, unless what Mr. Dwyer is saying, the salary would be covered for an interim with the line item that's already there.
Well, part of my request to Mrs. Monsel is to see if that, my memory, how much of my memory is still intact on that question. There is no doubt in my mind that the relocation costs, in all likelihood, will have to come out of next year's budget. To think that we're going to relocate a superintendent by June 30 and get it billed out is, I think, quite unrealistic.
Agreed.
And so then we would say, based on our discussion, that might happen in a couple of days on superintendent's search, what's the likelihood of aggressively spending consulting dollars between now and June 30? And if we decide we're going to do it, I think we would do what we always do. Tell the superintendent and the finance director, find it. Find it somewhere. Because, you know, they'll find it in a little line item here, and a little line item there, and they're responsible to balance the budget, and that'll be just a cost.
And then in the 19, 20, we would be putting the relocation portion and some other fees and whatnot.
And in all likelihood, if I get the right answer, the factually correct answer, which hopefully would be the right answer, that we'd find that we have room in the salary and benefits line to absorb part of those costs.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
It's a, what is it, a known, unknown, or an unknown, known? I don't know, one of those two.
Unknown but attributable.
Any other thoughts, final thoughts, comments? So we're leaving the $100,000 right now, the sense of the body. We're leaving Walter Fitzgerald as is, and we're moving right now, this is the sense that I'm getting, and they're going to suggest the Strathfield roof going to capital non-recurring for next year. That's where we stand right now. If anybody is rethinking that over the next 24 hours, please, what?
Sorry. The staff, when this discussion goes on with Mrs. Monsel, and they're looking at relocation costs, the staff will bring us some proposal on Thursday as to where they suggest that money come from.
Out of this current year's budget?
No, for next, yeah, the relocation, whatnot. So it may still have to come out of...
Well, because this...
I would only answer it this way. We've identified two areas potential. And it might be that it's not Thursday that they come to us, but that following a couple of meetings where we give better guidance as to what the likelihood of spending that money this year, they might be in a better position to tell us. And if we decide that most of the money is going to be spent next year, the fact that we've budgeted 200 in one area and 100 in the other area, we might get the proposal, and it says we can do all AC units for 100, but we need to use 25,000 or 30,000 of it to cover a gap. And therefore we make that choice. I think we can make that choice once the budget is, because we make a lot of choices around reallocating funds to cover an overage in one area or an underage in another. And that's next year's discussion, I think.
One very quick item, shouldn't we not be talking about a relocation item, which is part of a contract negotiation we have not had and shouldn't be discussing in public anyway?
It is pretty standard practice to cover relocation costs.
I'm just talking about the numbers, I just...
But as long as we don't talk about numbers, I think we're okay.
But weren't we just asking Mrs. Monsel to provide us with numbers, which we don't want to talk about?
In a private email to the board, not public information that will be posted.
Send it to us publicly as part of the search process information, which is not FOLIABLE.
I was just saying, the numbers really aren't a secret, because the superintendents have access to all of the contracts. And if you look at Fairfield County, everybody shares all the superintendent contracts for the numbers. We literally get a spreadsheet that has all of that on there.
No, and I understand that what was done passed, I'm just saying it is a negotiable factor for a new contract. That was my only point, I agree, but...
Always is.
Ms. Pico.
I just wanted to say that I didn't agree to anything yet. I, just listening to the suggestions, and that I, the reason why I asked for more time to submit through email was to give myself fresh eyes to look at all of this again, including the new information.
And that's for everybody, a fresh eyes. I'm just trying to, we've talked about a lot of different scenarios, just trying to recap of where I think that we are, so when we all go back and everything...
And that's why I chimed in, that I was listening to everybody, but I didn't agree to anything, or not agree. Like, I just didn't chime in on it.
Well, just, and just to clarify, though, if anyone is planning on making any specific amendments to the budget, with the memory of a not-too-distant Board of Ed budget meeting still on my mind, I think it would be really, really helpful for staff to be able to have those numbers, so that we are not here with our phones tapping away at the table for hours, as we did once. So just want to put that out there, that it would really be helpful. I am not planning on making any amendments to the budget. I am planning on voting for the budget as is. I will be happy to listen to everyone else's amendment, should they have them, and decide then. But just please, I ask all board members to please get that information, so that staff, Mrs. Monsel, and anyone else can do the numbers out in advance. And even if we don't get it in advance, if we just get it at the table Thursday night, at least we will not be figuring it out at the table Thursday night.
If I were king for the day, I would say if it's not in by Wednesday at noon, it can't be put in front of us.
Yeah.
I know it, you know?
No.
I mean, essentially, the ideas have already been expressed. The ideas have already been expressed.
Robert's rules, I don't think you can do that. I agree in sentiment entirely, but you can't do that. But, because also the reminder is that this is not just about dollars, it's also about educational impact. So there could be a staff number beyond Mrs. Monsel who needs input on a decision that someone is going to come up with. So this is not just a number, it is impact, they need time, but as much as I completely agree about the cutoff, and would, could be very good for me, but we can't do that.
But as soon as possible, just to get the work into stat, just to get your information, your questions, so they can turn it around for us. Anything else?
Tell them to comment.
Yeah. All right. Any public comment? Nope, no public. Motion to adjourn?
Right here.
Can I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Asa, can I have a second? Ms. Leeper, all in favor?